Good afternoon, everyone. Madam Clerk, are we ready to go?
Madam Mayor, we are ready to go whenever you are.
Okay, thank you so much. We're gonna start out with the Pledge Allegiance. And I'm gonna ask our good friend Terry Russell from Channel 8 to lead us in the pledge.
(laughing)
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for the Reno City Council.
Madam Mayor, roll call for Reno City Council, Breckus.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Delgado.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Jarden.
Yeah.
Reese.
Here.
Shevy.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
All right, thank you so much.
At this time, Madam Mayor, I would recommend that the county have their clerk call their roll, and then we'll proceed with Airport Authority calling theirs after that.
All right, thank you so much. I'll turn it over to the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you call a roll for the Washoe County Commission, please?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Bon Harten, Chair.
Present.
Vice Chair Bob Lucy.
Here.
Marsha Burke, Clerk.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Janie Herman.
Here.
We also have our Assistant District Attorney Paula DiPirelli, and our interim County Manager Dave Solero. I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
For Reno Tahoe Airport Authority, Trustee Caricelli is excused. Trustee Carey. Mayor Chaplin. Trustee Farahi.
Here.
Trustee Genoli.
Here.
Trustee Jay.
Present.
Trustee Rose. Trustee Spurazza.
Here.
And Trustee Spurver.
Here.
All right. Madam Clerk, I'm gonna send it back to you. I imagine we're just gonna continue on with our agenda of public comment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, as this is a joint meeting at this time, we will be taking all of our items at the same time. Our first item today is public comment. The public is noticed that they will be allotted three minutes for their public comment. We remind everyone of decorum while in this room. There is an expectation that you will not cheer, you will not applaud, there will be no booing. Please address the body as a whole, and be respectful while you're in the room. Madam Mayor, first to give public comment today is Ray Lake, followed by Ryan, followed by Russell Earl.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Council Members, and Trustees. For the record, my name is Ray Lake. I am the past Chairman of the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board. I've lived in northern Nevada for over fifty years, so I've seen the problems in the North Valleys develop over time. I've seen the developments come in. And I was at the meeting last night where there were a number of resolutions passed, and the moratorium was denied. I think that that may have been a mistake, because I don't think people are inclined to act on things like this until they get their backs against the wall. And there still is a natural moratorium that will occur, but I think you remove that pressure. And I've seen past city councils and commissions that have kicked his can down the road, and I think it's finally come to rest. And I don't really have anything more prepared, but I just wanna say that the folks in this room are the ones that need to deal with it. And it needs to be dealt with now. We can't put that off anymore. So, thank you very much.
Ryan, followed by Russell Earl, followed by Tim Fata.
Hi, I'm Ryan McKinnney. I've lived here for thirty years. I've seen a lot of stupid stuff done. And in the past twenty-four hours, the meeting that was held yesterday, that was ridiculous. First, instead of, "Let's start down, let's start a settlement conference with the people in the valley that sued, and want to get through City Reno, and Washoe County Commission, you guys are next." So, if I were you, I'd settle with them, because the only reason you didn't get hit this time is because the judge said no. And you know it, because you had the developers and hydrologists said that you were wrong with what you were doing in Lemon Valley area. Two, the resolutions of a moratorium, that doesn't work. If your NABs, your committee, your CABs saying, "Don't do it," and you still do it, that doesn't smell right to me. That's wrong. That's corrupt. That's waste even more money by hiring lawyers and appealing instead of sending down a settlement council. See, I'm trying to make... Three, the only person that was doing her job yesterday was Councilman Jenny Breakfast. To me, it looks like the rest of you are in some way, in form, have your hands in the special interest pockets. And I'm not looking out for us, the residents. It seems to me that you're more looking out for the special interest. The only person that really did her job today was Councilman Breakfast. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Russell Earl, followed by Tim Fata, followed by Gordon Gossage.
Good afternoon, Russell Earl, representing the Silver and Oldest Community Organization. I was at the meeting last night. I was disappointed that you folks voted against the moratorium, but here we are. Again, we're looking at another Band-Aid to a problem that we have all created, or it's been created. It's simple math, and this has been explained to you before. If you bring more water into a closed hydrologic basin than you can evaporate, you're gonna have a problem. We're in that situation now. So, now the next Band-Aid is to put, I've heard differing theories, whether it be a reservoir off of American Flat, or spray it in the air and try to get it to evaporate, and maybe get six inches out of Swan Lake. Again, a Band-Aid. What you folks need to do is upgrade all the sewer treatment plants to A-plus water. We're gonna have to build a pipeline so that it adheres to what can be discharged into the Truckee River, so that when it goes to Pyramid Lake, it doesn't have a problem with the Indian Reservation and what they will accept. These are all expensive options, but it needs to be done. I mean, the builders, the developers, everybody has a hand in this. If they wanna continue to develop like they're doing in the North Valleys, these are the difficult decisions that have to be made now. We can't just keep throwing, kicking the can down the road is one thing I've heard, or Band-Aiding the problem. I mean, we started with HESCO barriers, and then we improved on the HESCO barriers, and now we're talking about pumping some water over to American Flat. So, are we trying to spread the misery to those of us off of Red Rock and that area now? So, now we're gonna get more mosquitoes, we're gonna have potential problems with bacteria, because that water, as we all know, is not very clean. You know, if you wanna pump A-plus water, that'd be great, but that's not what is projected to be moved over there. So, I would ask you folks to make these difficult decisions and come up with a way. You know, you came up with a fifty, or may be coming up with a way for a $55 million bond to help out Stonegate and their potential infrastructure issues. That's, or at least that's what they were asking for. Come up with a bond, and do it right, and do it once. Don't keep wasting money on these small Band-Aid projects. Thank you.
Tim Fata, followed by Gordon Gossage, followed by Danny Kleas.
For the record, Tim Fata, sixty-plus-year resident, council members, commissioners, airport board. I was here and spoke last night, and again, I'm gonna just read kind of my little thoughts. You weren't privy to everything that was going on on the board, so the meeting last evening was quite enlightening. Focus on the city and its treatment of the people they represent. The city attorney should have done all his due diligence on the complainants once they had the list, not after the fact, and it's not doing part of his job. End the misery, and where the part of the damages of the families, just settle. Bite the bullets. You guys lost, and you will continue to lose on the city with that. I spoke earlier this year at a meeting. We have lots of engineers and developers in the Reno area that can solve the flooding. We only need them to get working on it. At that time, I stated, "There is a need for a moratorium to stop the building and impact them, the developers and the builders." There's nothing that can be done until the developers and the builders feel the pain from the poor planning and poor practices that have been had in the past. Last night, you saw the developers and the builders come together out in force against the idea of stopping development. We're not here to stop development. We live in the valley. We're only stopping the insanity of building in a floodplain in a closed basin. An example was given by Mr. Hicks of McDonald, Bergen, and Bible. Mr. McDonald is a great friend of mine and my best man. Mr. Hicks used an example of South Meadows as building in a floodplain. Well, South Meadows might be a wetlands, but it's not a floodplain. It does have drainage and access and drainage to the Truckee River, so it's not a closed basin. So, that's not a good example. Poor planning and no follow-up of developments have created the nightmare in the North Valleys. We need to continue and refocus the developments in that area with better planning for the future, because we need to correct the failures of the past, at the same time fixing a complete storm drain system and upgrading the sewer treatment plant. My solution would be, stop all the discharge into Swan Lake totally, upgrade the treatment plants to produce A-water discharge, pump it out of the valley and back to the river, or sell it, whatever. It's a valuable item then. But this won't happen overnight. It won't happen in the next months. Excuse me. So, I have one recourse of action, my friends, and that's to pray. I hope no harm in my fellow residents of the valley, but I'm gonna pray for rain. As we cannot control or change the weather, only the area in which we live, do the right thing, council members. Stop building and approving developments in this closed basin. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tim.
Madam Mayor, our next comment is from Gordon Gossage, followed by Danny Kleas, followed by Denise Ross.
My name is Gordon Gossage of Regenesis Reno, and some of you will find what I have to say a little bit familiar, if you're here yesterday. I'm not a hydrologist, nor an elected leader. Only as a member of the community do I advocate having as much information available to all the electeds and all the stakeholders, so that the most informed decisions are made. Everyone in this room knows the flooding crisis in Lemon Valley must be solved. And over the past few months, I've heard estimates of anywhere from $50 million to $100 million for a permanent solution that will take at least five years. At least one of our local experts is certain there is a solution that will cost much, much less than that. We only need $45,000 from the private sector to create a feasibility study to flesh out a concrete estimate for the two solutions he proposes. Maybe it also makes sense to approve a temporary solution in addition for $3 million until the necessary permanent solution is co-created by the entire community. The push for a building moratorium within the community was fueled by a perception promoted online by the media and by others that the city and the county are doing nothing. As we all know, this is not true. People I've spoken with over the past several months, up to yesterday's hearing, have detailed a lot of the efforts so many of the stakeholders are working on. Ken Crater described a self-organized meeting of engineers last night who were brainstorming solutions. I didn't know about this remarkable effort until last night. Unfortunately, people outside the circle of the powerful and the electeds are extremely misinformed. There isn't a trade-off between rigorous environmentalism and providing homes to all of our new and our current neighbors. It will be difficult to build housing in the North Valleys unless there is an accepted, named, identified, credible solution to the flooding. The debate about creating affordable and workforce housing is hidden behind like-minded people reinforcing their own interpretation of the facts by only speaking with each other. The debate must be part of all public meetings, and must be extensively covered in online conversations and in the media. Our population will continue to grow by more than 10,000 people year after year after year. The growth may accelerate. People are moving in, whether or not they have jobs and whether or not they have housing they can afford. They don't need EDON to tell them to move to Reno. The Sierra Pacific Megapolitan area has 14 million people. 13.3 million people are in California. Only 650,000 are in Nevada. The movements into and within the mega-region are forces we can't control. If we don't build 4,000 homes every year for the next ten years, rents and prices will continue to skyrocket. Growth can't be stopped. However, it can be shifted by stakeholder actions. We can build in the North Valleys, or within the McCarran Ring, or we can build a new city of 60,000 people stretching from Fernley to Yarrington. Thoughtfully or in chaos, we will all decide. I urge you to open up our community's decision-making process. Please allow all stakeholders to provide information and drive our community to make decisions based on facts and not on emotions. Thank you.
Danny Kleas, followed by Denise Ross, followed by Sam Dene.
Danny Kleas, for the record. A lot of things were said last night. A lot of things weren't said last night. Mr. Hall forgot to tell everybody that he had a chance before going to trial to declassify all the members of the class action lawsuit. He decided not to. Now that the city has lost, now he wants to declassify them? What's going on? Another... This was taken today, if I can get the overhead. These will be pictures that you guys, Mr. Reese, sorry because you talk so much about it. This is what you wanna put in American Flats? That's a real good one, you know? It's turning red now. Here you go. You wanna put this in American Flats? Here's some more red stuff. More red stuff. More red stuff. Guess where this is at? This is at the Nature Preserve Center for Kids to Go See. That is right next to the path. You wanna put that in somewhere else? Guess what? Yeah, it's sewer. I don't know what you guys are thinking. This is outrageous. And this is only one part of the lake. There are hundreds of parts of this lake that look the same way. What is wrong with you guys? Do these pictures... Do you wanna swim in that? Because we're told that's recreational. That's great water. Alls you have to do is wash your hands afterwards. What is wrong? We keep showing you guys these pictures. This is done today. This is done an hour before we came to this meeting. And you guys wanna spray that up in the air? How many more people are you gonna contaminate with that? We already breathe this stuff every day. I don't know. There's so much stuff that's wrong, and you guys just say, "Oh, well." Just like patting all of us residents on the head saying, "It's okay. The developers will fix it." Developers saying, "We pay for all the infrastructure." Have you seen the infrastructure out there? Come visit. Come visit me. I've asked Mayor Shevy to come, she won't come. I've asked everybody to come. I would barbecue lunch for you guys. Nobody wants to do it.
Thanks, Danny.
Madam Mayor, our next comment is from Denise Ross, followed by Sam Dene, followed by Roger Edwards.
Good afternoon, Denise Ross. I appreciate the Airport Authority being here. I hope that maybe you can persuade some common sense into the committees that keep turning their backs on the residents. We're not a real wealthy part of our society, but we matter. Our lives matter, and the city seems to think that they can come and take our homes away from us. This is supposed to be America. Those kinds of things aren't supposed to be happening. The council needs to be reminded that all these issues, as Mother Nature causing the flooding, it didn't. Proper mitigation at developments. Their own expert said 90% of the developments since 2002 lacked adequate mitigation. It was already adjudicated by a jury of the community and a duly-elected judge, and the arguments of the city planning and engineers was found unbelievable. The city's own expert testified that flooding was inevitable, and condemning the residential property was going to be required. Why is the city still considering to do this? What if it were your home? I'd like to do a little bit of show and tell. Went out to the lake this morning. This is the water. It's all sealed. It's all been washed. I wouldn't put anyone health at risk. This is what we took out. There was red algae in here, I'm sorry. It's all kind of been shaken up in the transport. But this is what we took off where the pictures were that Danny took. Would you guys mind if I approach?
Madam Mayor, as a reminder, there are no props permitted in chambers pursuant to our rules, so I would ask that you please stay at the podium with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted everybody to understand that, like I said, it's just water, and this is what wants to be atomized. Adam Circe said he would let his children play in it. Really? I'd like to see anyone, anyone, go jump in the water. After you do, I will. I'll be happy to. Anyone, dunk your head in it. Smell the water. It'll be open. Really, honest to God. Mr. Harten, you have to help us. You have to help us. Please. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next comment is from Sam Dene, followed by Roger Edwards, followed by Lori Beach.
I'll keep it if anybody wants to smell it. I'm gonna be atomizing it.
Sam Dene, Dene, the guard angel against government bureaucrats, and mostly against media wacko freaks. But I'm not gonna talk about the media wacko freaks today. I'm gonna talk about me. I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I spent many years flying fighters and bombers defending our nation, and after my airline, Pan-American World Airlines, was blown out of business by the terrorists and then by our own government, I started coming to these meetings in 1993. I've been to more meetings than all the citizens added together, and all those bureaucrats added together, 6,500 testimonies. And anybody wants to challenge that and say it's not true, come on up here, you got three minutes to do it. Anyway, that's, most people say, "Sam, get a life." What we have, I come to these meetings, I used to do this, and about ten years into it, one of, a friend of mine, and we were just, I said, "What are we gonna do when we run out of problems to work, to challenge? How's that working out, ladies and gentlemen?" Anyway, I come to these meetings, they come with sniper rifles, I come with a shotgun. Figuratively speaking, I have thousands of issues that I have to worry about all the time. Right now, what we have for the people out in TV land, we have the Airport Authority of mostly aviation amateurs, all of them. Most of them, I don't know, maybe one of them's they got some aviation bad. I was, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate, fighter pilot, bomber pilot, airline pilot. I put in my application to that board probably fifty times, never one vote. I take that as a compliment, because they don't want a warrior on there, they want yes people, like, "Hey, man, her and her." And then up there, we've got the bureaucrats sitting up there from Washoe and Reno, the best group of people that billboards can buy. That's what we have, ladies and gentlemen. They're gonna talk about that horrible disaster out there in Lemon Valley, and I've talked about them many, many times. I'm here with my figurative shotgun. We've got to send Burning Man on their way. We're making our law enforcement turn the head the other way. Sex, rock and roll, drugs, all the crimes they're committing, and the law enforcement has to turn the other way. They wouldn't do that if it was happening in Reno. Send them on their way, we don't need them anymore. This, and don't worry about it, there's plenty of money. These bureaucrats up here are gonna spend $200 million to build a $50 million school at Wild Creek and destroy the lives of 500 senior citizens for no reason other than the developers and the people buying their billboards. We got this deal. Oh, one thing we really don't need is another police station. If the police chief was offered one, he'd take it. Of course, they're gonna spend $40 million bailing out the worst organization in Reno, the Reno Gazette. $7 million they're gonna pay for that dilapidated old building, and then they're gonna spend another $33 million, for starters, to rehabilitate it. I could go on and on. See that clock up there? That's the Sam Dene. Don't give him one extra second of freedom of speech clock. When I arrived, there was no clock. How am I doing, ladies and gentlemen? This is more fun. Everybody's awake, I gotta tell you right now. Some of them even crying, if you can see them up here on TV. That lady was a city council member. Now she's running an airport! What are the chances?
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Roger Edwards, followed by Lori Beach, followed by Ken Crater.
It's hard to follow. My name is Roger Edwards, forty-plus-year resident, member of just about every board around here. Planning Commissioner for eight years. Currently, Vice Chairman of the North Valley Citizens Advisory Board. We have between 60 and 100 people that come to our meetings every time we have one of these developments. They all say the same things that you guys have been hearing for days and days, and I'm not gonna repeat it all. But you got 27 of you right now together in this room. This is not a time to do a, one of those things you did last night. What you need to do is you need to bring up motions and vote on motions and get the ball rolling for the new sewer plant out instead. You still gotta pump the water out, you still gotta do the mitigation things that are on the books, but you got to start the ball rolling. If it's a 30-month process that your own staff said to get the expansion done out at Reno St. Sewer Plant, you have to start it yesterday. Come on, folks. Someone make a motion. You got every, all the stakeholders here. Someone make a motion. Let's get a vote, let's get the thing started. Okay? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our next comment is from Lori Beach, followed by Ken Crater.
Good afternoon, Lori Beach. Last night, I was educated that the high 200K for housing is what is affordable. Still not affordable for the average warehouse worker that will be employed in the warehouses being built in the valley. The Reno City Council seemed to have felt a moratorium is not in their best interest last night. Note, I did not say Lemon Valleys. Many, if not all, the developers that came out last night said the issue needed to be looked at as a public-private joint. So, let's do that. Let's sit down, let's form these working groups you were talking about, but let's bring everybody to the table, not just the city and county officials, their staff, and the developers behind a closed door. These working groups were talked about at the last joint meeting, and nothing came of it. I know of not one resident that was asked to the table, and we are good at sharing information, if y'all hadn't already realized that. As you are well aware of, we have some very smart residents in the valley and deeply care about their homes and our community. I have personally lived in cities all size, Washington DC, Baltimore, the villages within Europe, and speaking for myself only, maybe it's time for me and my family to accept that the rural life of Lemon Valley is over, and it's time to accept it or make decisions as a family to leave Reno in the next couple years after retirement. The residents of Lemon Valley should not be expected to continue to live in the warzone atmosphere, as no other neighborhood in Reno or Washoe County would tolerate or be expected to. Again, I only speak for myself as a resident that did not lose my home to the flooding. All I had to personally do was replace some dirt and pay out of my pocket for a culvert the county did not have time to replace, but I took it upon myself to do self-help. I do not need or want your sympathy. Sympathy is found between shit and syphilis in the dictionary. What I need and expect from you now is your action. Thank you, and I'll see you at 5.4.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from Ken Crater.
For the record, my name is Ken Crater. I want to thank everybody here today for taking time to address the issues that need to occur in the North Valleys. And obviously, the city council had a long meeting last night, there was a lot of discussion. But at the end of the day, I believe today's meeting will be the start at some real solutions that will help lower the lake level to provide some relief from the folks that live in the impacted area. And the fact that the Airport Authority is willing to sit down and look at possible easements to allow a pipeline to go across their property, that's a huge deal. The county, I've heard estimates that you've spent up to $7 million to date to help mitigate the flood impacts. I don't think a lot of people realize just how much money, time... I don't think a lot of people realize just how much money, time, and effort has been spent on this to try and alleviate the issues that are occurring in this area. You know, fact is, Mother Nature put down, what, six inches of rain in January 2017, three inches in February 2017, and another inch in March. That's unprecedented for this area. When I went back through the annual weather history, it was in the 1890s, the last time we had that much water in that short of a period. And my motto is look forward, not backward, and I believe that's what this body is doing today. We can't go back and correct what we did in the 60s and 70s when we allowed all the development in this area with no flood mitigation, but there are solutions. Some of the things that we talked about in a meeting last week with a group of a lot of very smart and talented engineers could even help alleviate some of the impacts of the developments that occurred through the years without any flood mitigations. One developer offered up the possibility of having 1,200 acres of his property become an infiltration basin area. That would be a huge benefit to this area. But I think today, again, starting piping this water north, it's been vetted, our group considered it, I think we all agreed that this is a real solution that can benefit. And there's not one solution, it's going to take five or six things. At the end of the day, we're probably going to have to look at possibly purchasing or fixing some of the most impacted homes in that area. We're going to have to look at shutting off some of the old dirt roads there and re-vegetating because every time it rains, more material washes into the lake and fills it up. And in fact, one comment was made last night about the drainage channel that Dermody Properties built that the water flows faster while actually having a wider channel slows the water down, and that channel bottom is armored. If you look at the old channel and how much debris washed into the lake year after year down that channel, it was a huge amount, which again fills up the lake. Now that that channel is armored, it will greatly reduce the volume of material that flows into Lemon Lake through the year. So again, thank you very much, and I appreciate what all of you have done for this community.
Madam Mayor, with that, we have no further general public comment today. Don Tatro would like to speak in general public comment, Madam Mayor.
Hi, Don Tatro with the Builders Association of Northern Nevada. I just wanted to come up and thank you for coming here today, looking at a possible solution. I know some of my members have already stepped forward with easements and that kind of thing, but if there's anything else that we can do, any committees formed or anything, we're ready to step in and help. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I'm going to send it to Vice Mayor Doerr, thanks for the reminder. Why don't you give us a recap of last night?
Right.
And some of the actions we were taking so that they can be on the record.
Good, because so many of my colleagues were not in attendance and may not know the actions that we actually took. Prior to yesterday, we actually had directed staff to begin design for doubling the Reno Sted wastewater reclamation facility, and we'll be giving further consideration to that at our next meeting. Last night, we took a number of actions, our staff had prepared a resolution with a number of actions, and I just want to mention the ones that we added here at the council. We recommended de-watering Swan Lake to the extent we could, and we directed staff to look for land application opportunities for stormwater and wastewater effluent to further reduce the water levels in Swan Lake. We also, for those that don't know, our staff have come to us with what they call flow shave, which is basically an expansion. The plant itself has a 2 MGD. We added a .5 MGD, or about a 20% increase to that. It was considered to be used for further development, but last night, we redirected the flow shave project to help de-water Swan Lake rather than use it to support new developments with new sewer needs in the North Valleys. What that really means is not taking water out of the lake, which many people called me about, but it really was about taking existing effluent, existing effluent that would be discharged to the lake and not discharging it to the lake by rather sending it down to Tom Wharf. This should remove about 400,000 to 500,000 MGD of effluent from, or gallons per day of effluent from Swan Lake. We also wanted to move forward with doubling the size of the plant, as already mentioned, but not to allow any of the additional water. So doubling the plant from two to four MGD, but not allowing any of that additional water to be discharged to the lake, very similar to the way it works at Lake Tahoe, where they export all of their wastewater. We know we can't export all of it, but we directed our staff to make sure that the new increment does not go into the lake but rather goes to a reservoir, land application, reuse, or some other something. We also reminded staff that when the sewer plant reaches its capacity, which it's now at about 97%, including commitments, that there will be no more will-serv letters until we have a new plant. We asked our staff to double their enforcement, we requested them to add staff, inspect every retention pond in the North Valleys for compliance with their permit. There were many comments made that the stormwater basins were out of compliance, weren't built according to design, or were filled with debris. We want to make sure that that is addressed. We asked them to increase our flood storage mitigation ratio. Right now, in the basin, there's a one-to-one, so every time you put fill, you have to excavate. We asked them to increase that by 30% to 1.3 to one. So that's very important. And then finally, we set up a new Swan Lake United Restoration Committee made up of council members to actually meet with the residents, per the comment we heard earlier, with developers and technical people, vet the technical proposals I had a stack on my desk here from the last 20 years that have not been acted on, to vet those and to come back to our council with a number of prioritized action items. So, and that could be having FEMA remap the floodplain with our partners, Washoe County, potentially decommissioning the Lemon Valley wastewater plant, whatever that is. So, and in fact, we did not enact a moratorium because we wanted to get right to work, we wanted to work on these action items. So, I know many of you aren't in the trenches or in the details, but that sets a context, I think, for what we're about to talk about today. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Madam Clerk, I'm actually going to probably do a little bit of a different process because we have such a large group. I am going to throw out a motion, I want to modify the council rules on our comments. I know we're going to have a presentation. After that presentation, I always like to send it back to the body for discussion. However, because it's such a large group, I want to be sensitive of everyone's time and putting those on the record. So I would ask for a motion to actually limit about two minutes. Usually, we do three minutes total for our council members, but I think, I'd like to take it down to two minutes due to the size of the room. So if I get a motion, thank you so much.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anyway, I just want to make sure everyone gets their comments on the record because of the group, and I appreciate your, your support. Okay, now we're going to move to a presentation, I believe. Oh, sorry.
Madam Mayor?
I'm jumping ahead, we need to approve the agenda. Right? Okay, Madam Clerk, at this time, I'm going to send it back to you.
I will be looking for approval of the agenda from the Reno City Council, please.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
We'll transition to Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, item number four.
Chair, item number four is the approval of the agenda for your action.
Looking for a motion? Motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Lucy. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Back at you, Madam Clerk. I guess you would have to do the same for the Airport Authority.
Madam Mayor, we would be looking for approval of the agenda from the Airport Authority Board at this time.
Moved.
Second.
All right. Madam Mayor, with that, we will be transitioning to item 5.1. This is a non-action item, therefore will be a presentation from the Airport Authority.
Okay, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, if I could introduce Mr. Schultz from the Airport Authority for allowing...
Microphone, please. Sorry.
Just introducing Mr. Schultz from the Airport Authority to make the presentation regarding the process for allowing temporary pipeline to cross Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority property.
Thank you.
If I could... I just wanted to make a disclosure for the record, because there are different easement conversations going on with the Airport Authority. This one is in relation to an easement that potentially entering into a agreement.
Speak up, please, they can't hear you.
I'm sorry, potentially...
All right, you guys, I want to make sure everyone keeps decorum, no yelling in here, everyone be very sensitive, okay? We'll, we'll make sure that we turn it up.
Can you hear me? I just want to make a disclosure for the record and full transparency. Today is a presentation on an easement, that easement potentially entering into an easement agreement with the City of Reno. There's been other discussions regarding other easements that have been, that I haven't been privy to, that have been discussed with staff at the City of Reno. I do want to disclose that I do have a financial relationship with Lifestyle Homes. Their property is not affected by this easement, but I wanted to make sure I put it on the record, also that they have a property adjacent to the county. But again, my understanding is that whether this project moves forward or not, that property would not be affected. So I just wanted to make sure I put that on the record for full transparency. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, before you begin, I apologize, I want, I'm going to line something out, we did it last night. Mr. Carl Hall, these are all going to be presentations, and we will take them as one because they are pertaining to the same item, the same subject, correct?
Yes, you can take presentations together.
So I want everyone to understand, we will take public comment after item...
We will take public comment after item 5.5. This will be after all presentations have been given, all board members have been able to ask their questions, and then we will take public comment prior to any action being taken by the board.
Okay. All right, thank you. I just wanted to clarify so that everyone understands.
Just the opposite of the Reno Gazette bailout.
Sam?
As a reminder of decorum.
We're keeping decorum, remember?
I know, I know.
I know, I know you don't like it, but I just want everyone to understand, it's important that we're here to solve issues, come together as a community. This is a, this is a subject that a lot of people are very passionate about, rightfully so. We're here to come together and solve solutions, not to attack anyone.
Wasn't an attack.
All right, but again, we're going to keep strict decorum, all right? Thank you, everyone. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, city council members, county commissioners, and airport trustees. As Chair Chaplin said, my name is Dean Schultz, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Reno-Tahoe Airport Authority. I just wanted to start by saying that the Airport Authority is proud to be a partner in finding an appropriate solution for the existing North Valley's flooding situation. As will be described in greater detail by Mr. Flansburgh later, there is a plan to install a pipeline from Swan Lake through the Airport Authority property to Washoe County-owned land north of the Reno Sted Airport. Since this proposal is temporary in nature and constructed above ground without disturbance of the land, approvals from the Airport Authority's perspective can be administratively handled at the local level without involvement by the Federal Aviation Administration and is a result much quicker than a permanent development easement. For this pipeline project, the steps on the left side of the slide constitute the extent of the processing required by the Airport Authority. All that is needed is a project description, which has been defined in the staff reports and other locations, an Exhibit A showing the surveyed alignment of the pipeline, which is also, I believe, underway and in progress, and a simple right-of-entry and hold harmless agreement, which has been drafted and included in the staff reports as well. Based on the simplicity of the process, we, the Airport Authority, don't foresee any issues from our perspective that would cause delays in the implementation of this project. Although not a topic of discussion on today's agenda, I did also want to share that the Airport Authority is happy to work with the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the North Valley's community to address the longer-term utility infrastructure needs to support the region. For permanent developments such as a utility easement on airport property, the list of the, on the right side of the slide are the steps of the process because of the required involvement of the Federal Aviation Administration by virtue of grant assurances committed to by the Airport Authority. There's obviously more steps in the process associated with permanent development activities, but it's not so onerous that it can't be done. We've, we've worked through these types of issues many times over the years with developments on airport properties, and in fact, we believe that it can be done in the timeframe the city and the county want. Based on discussions with Mr. Flansburgh, the planning, the design, and construction contracting for upgraded utilities through a permanent easement is likely something on the order of two to three years' process in and of itself, and the steps outlined on the right side of the slide can easily be accommodated within that timeframe if we all work collaboratively together. So at this point, that concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to try and address any questions when appropriate. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to start with questions from the Reno City Council. Who's got their button?
We don't have those.
Just signal. Okay, Councilman Breckus, two minutes.
I'm going to have to present because I have some images, I'm sorry. We don't have those.
Okay, I'm going to give you two minutes. I just want you to be reminded.
Last night, the body decided not to go through a study, a study period, and I respect the body's conclusion. It's been explained in the last couple days, there's been a lot of meetings with staff and different people with different interests. I haven't had any meetings, I don't know any meetings scheduled, I have not been informed of, of what's going on, but I, I do have questions about this proposal that I want to understand, and this is what came in my exhibit, and this is the easements that would then go up through the airport property. This is the exhibit of the Evans Ranch, about a 6,000-acre development that was approved in the Cold Springs annexation. It's a planned unit development for about 5,800 residential units, and it appears to me that the backbone infrastructure of that plan, and this is from the document, goes right through the same parallel and the same easement corridor that this temporary waterline goes through. That was surprised to me because it looks to me like this is, this solution that came up in a meeting I don't know about with who is also fitting another need, and that is the backbone infrastructure for the Evans Ranch development, which the proponent and owner of that at the time was Mr. Listner and Lifestyle Homes, and as seen in this record here, our Assistant City Manager, Bill Thomas, also was the representative and has told me in the past that he has an equity interest in it. So I'm just, because I haven't heard tech meetings where these, this concept came forward, I have not seen a scientist to explain that this is the best idea, I'm a little cynical and skeptical that this is a foil for getting some backbone infrastructure in for a developer who has an obligation to provide the infrastructure himself for his development. And I don't know, is anyone aware of this provision, of this requirement for this development to open? Would it be anyone in this body? Were you, Mr. Schultz, aware? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Breckus. Okay, next, any other questions from council members?
No, well, Madam Mayor, I'm going to have questions when we get to the proposal, so I'm saving up my questions for that.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it back to you.
Madam Mayor, with that, would you like to transition to the Board of Commissioner questions at this time?
Yes.
Madam Mayor?
Can I ask a clarification of the executives and boards? Would you also like to adhere to the two minutes as dictated?
We are a guest, and we will adhere to whatever the parameters are.
All right, thank you for clarification.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Young?
This also is news to me. I, I don't know where this came from or what the science is behind this, but I do have a question for the gentleman who just presented, the CFO of the Airport Authority. You said, can you, first of all, when you're talking about federal FAA regulations, can you define for me what a temporary use is versus a permanent easement? Is that defined by time?
Essentially, yes.
How long is a temporary use?
Generally, anything over five years would be considered permanent.
Okay, so up to five years, this could work?
Thereabouts, yes.
Okay, and a permanent would be five, six plus? Okay, and then, did you say that to get this up and running, I'm sorry if I misheard you, it would take two to three years to start moving the water?
No, I was referring to the permanent utility easement.
Oh, so you're looking forward to then permanent?
On a longer-term basis, yes.
But when would you be able to start with this? What day would this, I mean...
The permanent?
No, to move water. What day would water move according to your estimates as a CFO?
Well, I'm, I'm going to defer to the city Public Works Director.
Okay, we don't need to go there right now, then. So your permanent, temporary is up to five, and then you'll, during that time, it'll take you two to three years in that five-year window to apply for a permanent easement?
Well, I mean, we're going to have to get back to you on, on the specifics of the timing of the permanent easement, because we need to work with the city. We're, we're... We're, from our perspective, the Airport Authority's perspective, we're not installing the utilities per se. We're working to make sure that the land is available for the installation of utilities.
So you would donate the land to us?
Not necessarily.
Oh.
And that is one of the criteria that we're going to have to work through as we go forward on a permanent basis.
Temporarily, you'll be donating the land?
Temporarily, we're not required by the FAA to get fair market value for the use of the land.
But should you move to permanent, then you would expect a fair market value?
That would be one of the requirements that we would have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Commissioners, anyone else? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, now transitioning to questions from the Airport Authority Board.
Questions?
Madam Mayor, with that, I recommend that we transition to item 5.2. This is a presentation on the project, remove water from Swan Lake.
Good afternoon. For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. Presentation, please.
John?
So today, I want to describe the project that's being proposed. On the cover slide here, this was the, in 2017, an aerial view prior to the HESCO barriers going in, just as, not that we need a reminder, we know what this looked like. I do want to draw your attention, though, to the lake, and you'll notice that there's kind of an island out there with the utilities. That's actually a Tomwa infrastructure. They have electricity there. I only bring that up because that is the location of where we would look to put the pumps, so we could run them off electricity, and then that we could then extend the intake out into the lake further. In addition to the project of, in that lake, just because some of the other questions have come in, we would be looking to submerge that intake about four feet below the water surface, above ground but below the water surface. Just an update on where we stand for the lake today. So in 2017, the lake level went up to 49.23. That's seven tenths of a foot below the 100-year floodplain, phimidazinated floodplain elevation. During that first year, you can see the evaporation loss. Interesting part about the evaporation loss, and this is just evaporation we're seeing from the peak down to the trough, it's equivalent to about 3,800, 3,900 acre-feet of water. So we can see the elevation difference is a little over two feet in that first year. I'm going to transition to this next slide, just because the yellow, and it didn't come out as great a color as I'd like it to, but if you look at the yellow, you can see on the far right, the precipitation in inches, where we had nearly 17 inches of precipitation, average is seven and a half inches a year. So 225% approximately was the amount of precipitation we received in North Valleys in the water year of October through September 30 of 2016 to 2017. In the water year 2017-2018, we received about 110%. So that would be more of a typical type year, what you would expect to see. The lake rise that year was about a foot and a half from the trough, late summer 2016 to the peak water elevation in March, April, April of 2018. Just to give you an idea, a foot and a half increase. And then we had another year of, you know, evaporation, again, about another 3,900 acre-feet or so of evaporation that occurred in the lake and that dropped it down. But then, we had another big storm year, and through the July, we were looking at about 200, or about 175% of normal, with a little thunder broomer we just had a week and a half ago that's actually taken our precipitation. It's hard to see, but it's almost to 15 inches, almost twice. We're almost at 200%. This is the uncertainty that we have and the concerns of expecting the evaporation, and although we see that the evaporation gives us those gains, when we have high-water precipitation timeframe or volumes through the year, it just, it's, it brings that water level up to a level that's just not comfortable. What can we do to reduce the amount of water going in? So that's what staff was, was looking for. We wanted to bring some sort of solution to the table. I want to give credit to Vince Griffith with Reno Engineering Corporation, as he was looking at this and helping to determine, you know, what could be done, and we were looking at different properties. This was, was something that he's worked with our staff on, and I want to recognize that. Councilmember Breckus, you had mentioned the alignment of the pipeline and how suspiciously that looks like it follows some other alignment for a permanent pipeline in some other planning document. I would not be surprised because we followed the alignment of general, the existing Lemon Drive through that area. And again, of course, once you get to where we need to deviate from Lemon Drive, where that, where that roadway is, you're going straight north into the American Flat property. The, on the map here, the darker grid line is the, where it enters the airport property and then where it would exit into the American Flat on the north end. Again, on that first page, I showed where that little island out there where Tomwa has a well and pump system, we would tie into that general location to access the lake with the pipe intake. We'd be pumping the water up to the American Flat property, and we'd be using it to sprinkler, irrigation the American Flat property, not atomizing misting. There was certainly a proposal that Washoe County had put together in their list of potential items to do misting. We're not looking at that. The lake water is such that you would have, you potentially would get fouling of those really fine emitters. You would, you're looking here at just, at sprinkling, just like any other irrigation process that you would see. And specifically, it would make sense for us to put it into some sort of agricultural use. If we could move forward with this project, we would be able to procure the pipe, have the pipe laid over ground. So I want to be clear about that. As Dean mentioned in his presentation, if we were to excavate and put the pipe underground, do that type of work, we would need to do that two-to-three-year process. This was really working together to determine what we could do to do something sooner and put something in place that we could get the, the infrastructure in place for the pipeline and be able to do whatever prep potentially on that American Flat property that would allow for an agricultural use, get it planted. You have to, you have to sow before you can reap, so we'd need to get the planting in and then, and then have the irrigation going on to make that work, and this would give us a timeline that would allow that to happen. This sheet just shows, on the far left is Lemon Drive, just shows kind of a little bit of alignment next to that parcel there in the kind of center-right of the plan sheet where that pump house or the, where the wellhouse is, where we'd access electricity, and then where we'd extend the pipeline into Swan Lake. Again, submerging that, you're not picking up the, the very top scum, if you want to call it that. You're down inside the water. We'd be looking about a four-foot depth there. And then on the land application, you know, the pictures always look so good when you start out the process, but it rarely is able to, to make it remain that way. There's actually a roadway in that parcel that kind of goes through an American Flat road. So rather than having two nice little symmetric pivots or something out there to keep that roadway open, we'd be looking at a different configuration, and although we're showing kind of a pivot situation here, it very well could just be more of like your straight pipe with the, with the wheels to turn and just be on a straight system that would go back and forth. So we'll, we'll have to work out the details, but obviously, the goal in mind here is to put as much of the property, to be able to sprinkle as much of that property for land application to increase evaporation, but more ideally would be if we were able to plant a crop and have the excess, or have the water going to that, because a crop would take more water than not having one. Finally, on the water quality and regulatory input, certainly this was looked at. We talked to the Nevada Department of Environmental Protection. Bureau of Water Pollution said that there were, that they would not require permits if we're using the lake water. If we have effluent water, it's just a matter that we have to identify where, or effluent, we just have to identify where we're change of use for the effluent, but for the lake water, the permit would not be required. Washoe County Health Department is testing the water on a regular basis. They have given us a letter that there'd be no adverse impact, actually provided a letter to Washoe County Community Services, that there'd be no adverse impact for public health. They do recommend the continued sampling and testing, of course, and they see a benefit that would be providing aeration and reducing mosquito habitat. So those were the benefits and the main items that I wanted to cover today and would be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Flansburgh. I appreciate it. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask any of my council members, would you like to start with two minutes of questions? Council, Vice Mayor Duer, go ahead.
Yeah, is the gentleman from the Health Department here that gave you that letter or a representative?
I am not aware. James English was the one who provided the letter.
Okay.
Andrew Solero.
All right, well, the reason I'm asking is that several of us serve on the Tomwa Board, and apparently, Tomwa staff sent a letter to our staff at City of Reno raising some concerns about the quality of the water, and I want to, I should start by saying, I'm very supportive of any project that will get water out of Swan Lake. Right? So, and the more quick, the quicker, the better. But they sent over a letter concerning arsenic that's in the Swan Lake water, and they're concerned because at Tomwa, we have been looking at injecting A-plus water into that aquifer. We've been evaluating that for several years. The City of Reno itself, I think, has spent on the order of $600,000. And, and my concern was, how do these projects work together? If we sprinkle water on top, and it has arsenic, and apparently there are nitrates in the soil as well, and in fact, there's pretty high total coliform, which I'll come back to maybe on a second round of questioning, but I just wondered, you know, we're trying to preserve this aquifer for storing good quality water, get, you know, treating effluent, injecting it, potentially removing it and using it, and how do these work together and how do, how do you resolve those issues?
Great question. Thank you, Councilmember Duer. The, Tomwa did send us a letter. In the letter, they talked about some parameters, just some concerns that they would have. John Inlow, who I believe is, John is here. John Inlow and I spoke about it. One of the things that we would do in this project would be to put some soil probes in, meaning we don't want to over-irrigate the land, and that would be the concerns you're talking about. You over-irrigate the land and potentially have migration down into the soils to a deep level. We don't want to do that, obviously, so we would put some soil probes in to make sure that we don't irrigate, over-irrigate for the crop that we would be planting in there.
Okay, well, Madam Mayor, I know we're limited to two minutes, but just, when I come back around, a follow-up question would be, if we're spending $3 million, but these soil probes find there's a problem with arsenic, you know, how do we square that up?
This, okay, the soil probes primarily are there for making sure that the, the depth of the water isn't going too deep. That's, that's, it's really just a positive.
Okay, so if it was too deep, you might stop sprinkling?
Correct, absolutely. That's what it's there for.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman Breckus?
When we had a meeting last April 29th, I think Mr. Solaro, a joint meeting with the County Commission, brought up this concept of aeration and crop development. I've expressed my cynicism that this involves the developer responsibility to this new, what is called Lemon Valley Drive. It's never been dedicated a right-of-way, and I don't think it's on the long-range transportation plan, so I don't think it's accurate to just say that it is Lemon Valley Drive, to be honest. But I wasn't in the room when these discussions and areas went on, but I thought Mr. Solaro was talking about a different location to aerate, maybe one closer to the lake, where you could do like we used to do in Virginia Lake and aerate in the lake and let that lake grow. What scientific people have you relied upon to come up with this conclusion, and what other options were explored for this concept of, you know, taking the water somewhere?
Certainly. So in our discussions with Washoe County, working cooperatively, which is amazing thing, we work cooperatively off a very, a very lot of times. We have many items that we work together on. But in regards to this one, Acting County Manager Solero has looked at items that were closer to the lake, to the east and to the south, and asked the City of Reno to take the lead kind of on the properties that are adjacent closer to the airport. And so that's, so the concept has just been one of those concepts out there of, of what could be accomplished, and looking at large land parcels that you could have land application or agricultural use for, this is one of those that came out. Obviously, the airport property would also be great for that, but again, it's a two-to-three year process. We would, all those things would have to be, we have to follow. We don't know that those things would, would be compatible with airport use, and so this was a, a great way for us to work together and get, get a location that we could go to and something we could do quickly.
Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. I had the, as a member of the Board for the Washoe County Health District, I saw the opportunity to send an email to Mr. Kevin Dick yesterday. I received a reply today regarding the, the testing and the quality of Swan and Silver Lake. I received an email today, and I'll send it to Ms. Turney a little later, but just for transparency, the email that I received from Mr. Kevin Dick says that we discontinued our sampling of Swan Lake in 2017. And so my hope is that, so there must be some discrepancy, because I understand I got an email from staff, and so just for transparency, for clarity, and I know we wouldn't go and start providing or the aeration or anything else until quality has been tested, whether it's immediately and ongoing, but I want to make sure that that's part of the record as, as, as that's the information that I've received. I'll forward that email to Ms. Turney. And I emailed Mr. Dick while sitting here now, explaining for that clarity, because I know at times that happens, but again, Mr. Flansburgh felt it's my duty, as, as all of us, as the information that we received, that we're moving forward, that we have clarity in terms of all transparency. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Duer.
Yeah, perfect segue, because I had gotten additional information from Tomwa, serving on that board, about the water quality, and I sought this out because we had many comments last night about the poor water quality, and we saw the jars today. And before we start either applying it or sprinkling it, I wanted to better understand the water quality. And the, because further concern I had was that Tomwa has samples from April, May, and June, this April, May, and June, and they showed the total coliform, which is a combination of bacterias, went from 71 units to 980 units the second month, to 2,400 units the third month, which is at the top of the chart. That's where the scale ends. And I was concerned when I saw this data, and that was at Compton and at Pompey, they had similar numbers, eight, then it went to 893, then it went to 1,000. And so I did not know that they had stopped testing water quality. We've been assured that this water's safe to contact, to recreate in, and, you know, I just wanted to get clarity before we move forward with this project. So that's why I asked if there was anyone from the Health District here, and thank you, Mr. Delgado, for looking for that information and my information I'll also send to the clerk. This is not to stop this project, this is to get information, correct information on the record, and make sure we address all the issues before we move forward. Thank you.
Okay.
And so if I could, clarification on that. So this is the communication from July 10th of this year, and I have Duane Smith with Washoe County to clarify.
Yeah, thank you. For the record, Duane Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects for Washoe County. Yes, based on the questions, just want to provide some clarity, that yes, indeed, the Health Department did take water quality samples in 2017. Washoe County Community Services Department has picked up that sampling and testing. We take these samples so that we can understand what the water quality looks like. We take a look at things like arsenic, we take a look at things like nitrate, as well as coliform samples. We provide this information to the Health District and to any other interested parties so that we can make sure that we're being transparent on the lake and what those water quality samples show us is that it still continues to meet recreational water quality standards. So this is a, a letter that we received from the Health Department, more specific to the evaporation questions. Happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Yeah, that, you know, because last night, that was a big question, you know, spraying this water. I guess the question I have, how, that's a letter, how do I actually know that you've really tested this water?
Do we have the results?
Again, Duane Smith, for the record, thank you for the question. We have certified laboratories, so those are, the samples are...
And those test results are where?
The, the samples are collected, there's a chain of... There's a chain of custody, custody from the time the sample is collected, when it's taken to the laboratory, then we use a certified laboratory for those test results. So there is a chain of custody to allow us, or anybody that's interested in how that process works, to know that indeed that did occur.
Okay. But where are the test results? Like, when we all go to the, you know, the phlebotomist and they give us our test results, where are those?
Happy to send you all originals. We can also send you certified copies from the laboratory directly from the laboratory.
Okay, great. And what was the date of the last test that you did?
I don't know the exact date. It was, I believe, sample was taken last week or the week prior, so we're doing it on a, on a monthly basis.
Okay. Thank you. And I would definitely appreciate you sending us those test results.
Absolutely. Happy to put those up. And if they're not already on our website, I'm looking at our PIO.
Are they typically on your website?
Absolutely. We post everything that we do within Lemon Valley, all information, all notices, all activities. We do our very best to make sure that the public is aware of all the activities that we've continued to do for the last two and a half years associated with Lemon Valley. That's on our website.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Flansburgh, just really quickly, if there's something that you are not getting that's supposed to be on that website, will you please submit it in writing to my office and I'll make sure that we get that? Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Reese.
Madam Mayor, thank you. And I suppose my question is for Mr. Smith and for Mr. Flansburgh, so if you both want to be up there. Ultimately, these joint bodies are all tasked with protecting the health, safety, and welfare of this community. And so one of the concerns that you're seeing happen in real time, because we, as bodies, don't get together often, is that we are asking questions that demand answers, because we want to be accountable to the citizens that we serve. And so it's not a gotcha moment. It's not the opportunity for someone to bust out a map that, you know, someone sent them last night and said, "Ha-ha, we've got you," or "Look at this water quality." We need answers to be able to make the best decisions, and that answer comes from science. It comes from data. It does not come from folks who just think they have an answer because they live in the area, or folks who think they have an answer because they read about it on Facebook. So what I'm looking for is scientific evidence, the type of evidence that is represented in testing, laboratory science. I don't know the both of you well enough to know what your academic backgrounds are. I'm a lawyer. I trust science to provide the answers that we're seeking. But you have to appreciate that we, as bodies, want to be able to have that information in our hot little hands so that when the reporters come calling and the citizens demand answers, we can point to it. So how do we, how do we get that? How do we provide it to the public? In what way is it made available to all so that they can trust the information that they're receiving?
Yeah, I'll start again, for the record, Duane Smith, Washoe County. Great questions, and I appreciate that. And that is certainly something that we all have wrestled with, with this, the situation that we have on Lemon Valley from the beginning. We, of course, as professionals, abide by a code, so I think that's one bookend. I think the other bookend, though, is we have to recognize that we haven't necessarily always been 100% effective in communicating the good work that the county and that the city and that the other players involved in this, including Tommae, have been doing. So part of what our job and our responsibility is not only to protect the community and make sure that the community is, number one, the safe and, safety and health of the community, but also to communicate all these things that we're doing in the background. We've heard about meetings. I've attended those meetings. We've heard about studies. We're in the middle of doing those studies. For instance, we're reviewing, we've hired a consultant to look at the base flood elevation of Swan and Silver Lake to make sure that that is the right base flood elevation, to provide data that we can all stand on and make sure that that is accepted in the community. Through that process, we will also be revisiting the FEMA-designated floodplain extents. We know that the floodplains are old. We know that there are some areas where they're not accurate because of that, and we know we owe this to the community to update these. So we have initiated that. Actually, that work is underway right now. The consultant has been hired. So while we put some of this, we put this information up in different ways, and we try to communicate it as best as we can, we recognize some of our failings in the communication process. To help with that, we have hired a professional consulting firm to help not just Washoe County, but the City of Reno, the school district, Tommae, all of us to more effectively communicate all the good things that we're doing, our concerns for our residents, and making sure that we create a neutral area for everybody to have a, have a place to talk.
Yeah. All right. I appreciate your comments. Just one last question I did want to ask you. I know last night, Mr. Flansburgh, you did say that you have four full-time employees working on this situation.
Yeah, I have several employees, but equivalent probably to at least three full-time equivalents working just on this in our professional. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Smith, how many do you have at the county that are working on this?
Well, I would say that we have both our own employees, our roads crews, and certainly engineers that work on this. We also have a contract with a local pumping company to maintain the 40-plus pumps that we have and to make sure that everything is operational as part of our operations plan to respond to rain events, et cetera. So similar to what John is talking about, if you, if you add it up, it's probably about four-time Washoe County employees, but we have a significant contract with, again, our local pump contractor to help us maintain the pumping system as part of the barrier system that we've been maintaining and operating, repairing and replacing to make sure that the residents are protected. We've been doing this for the last two and a half years.
And it kind of shows you the magnitude of this issue. I mean, that's a lot of manpower. And I know that sometimes, you know, people are not satisfied with some of the things you're doing and, you know, and I think to Councilman Reese's point, it wasn't a gotcha. We want you to know that we appreciate you and your hard work. So want to make sure that that, that really is conveyed, because you don't have an easy job. We expect you to have this magic wand and fix it for us, you know, and we just, you know, know that's not realistic. So I appreciate your answers.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duer.
Since Mr. John Inlow at Tommae is here and that data came from them, I wanted to say two things. One, total coliform in itself is not dangerous. It's an indicator that there could be other bacteria. The E. coli, which is the thing we're really usually concerned about, is not particularly high. And I just wondered, between the two of you, since we have, you know, this is just an issue, I'd like to just put it to bed. Could you speak to where you took your samples? Are they posted? What were they for? Why do we have these numbers? Does the county have the same numbers you have? Those kind of questions.
Sure. For the record, John Inlow, Trucking Meadows Water Authority. The data that we received is the county water quality sampling data.
Same data.
Same data. Yeah, so Tommae's not doing our own sampling. We're relying on the data that the county provided.
Okay.
I just wanted to make a comment with respect to the irrigation on the American Flat Property with the work that we've been doing with Reno and Washoe County associated with the injection of category A-plus water and so forth with, by limiting the amount of irrigation so that you don't have seepage down through the water table to the aquifer. The county and the city have been agreeable to limit the amount of irrigation so that they, they don't have that infiltration. Our concerns are really mitigated from that perspective. You and I had talked about the coliform issue, and that's really more related to the misting application and not so much as to the, just the irrigation application.
How much coliform could you put on, like, when you apply reclaimed water? You know, I could ask this to probably any of you.
Yeah, reclaimed water is much different because of the source of the water, and it's disinfected water, and it's typically less than 2.2 total coliform, I believe, for a category A water.
And this is 2,000, and that's why I wanted to ask the question, especially if we were aerosol-ing this. That was my concern.
I think aerosol-ing is the concern. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from councilmembers? Councilman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Be really quick. Just again, the reason for my question was just for transparency, the amount of questions I receive from the community as a board member, not to presume that those anything being slided or anything else. And just again, in terms of the communication piece, it wasn't, in my perspective and vision that the Washoe County Health District was providing the testing. Thank you for the clarity, Mr. Smith, in terms of that you guys have now taken that forward and moved forward with that since then. That provides a lot more clarity in terms of the community, even on the slide itself it says, it suggests that the Washoe County Health District was providing the testing. But again, it's all a matter of communication and transparency and took that role on as a board member to ask the question. And I appreciate the opportunity to, to make sure that there's transparency throughout the process. Thank you, Mr. Flansburgh, Mr. Smith.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions, councilmembers? No, I'm going to send it to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioners, any questions? I saw Commissioner Herman first. Commissioner Herman.
Okay. So I have some concerns. We have between four and five feet of water behind barriers, and we're talking about in the first year, six to 12 inches going down. The barriers are not in good shape. It's gonna, you know, it just doesn't look like enough results for 5.5 million. When you, when are you going to start pumping? I'm going to go on, and you can answer what you want to answer. You know, there are crops that, that grow in the summer, but I don't know of any that would grow in the winter here. So I'm wondering, you know, we have the most need for getting water out of there during the summer, or during the winter, and we would be irrigating in the summer. I didn't see any reservoirs on this list or anything like that so that you could store it and use it. That wasn't there. So let's see. And then one other question was the pipeline. Is it designed to go both ways to bring effluent or sewer down to the lake as well as bringing the effluent back up? And that one question was, when, when do you think we'd be ready to start pumping?
Thank you for those questions. Again, for the record, John Flansburgh, City of Reno Public Works Director. The pipeline goes one direction, so it's just going to have the pump, the intake into the lake, the pump going up to the American Flat Property, provide water for irrigation. The timing of that project would be as soon as we, if we have approvals today, then we would quickly go to procure the pipe, put out a contract for the contractor to actually lay the pipe, get the pumps. There's just, there's a lot of tasks that we have to get. That's why we're asking not just for, you know, a contract, but potential of several contracts, so we could move quickly. The timing would be to get everything in place this winter and also look at contracting with a farmer to do site prep. They're not going to just be able to go out and plant seed. They're going to probably do some site prep ahead of time and then plant the seed before we'd be able to irrigate. So there's, there's all those steps in place, but the ideal would be to have this in place for next irrigation season, that we'd be able to go out there and, and begin using irrigation water for the crop. So that would be the timing. This is not looked at as just a one, a one-time thing for one year. We imagine this will be a couple of years at least, might be three. One of the thing that would help us, I think, longer term in this location is if we use lake water until the lake is sufficiently, has gone down, then in the future, we could, we could actually, looking at this location to extend effluent pipe, we could actually switch that water source in one future irrigation year to go to effluent and put that into land application, which would help us there as well. As the council knows and from my presentation yesterday, in order to expand our reuse system, we're going to obviously need to have a winter time storage use, just to your point, Commissioner Herman. So thank you for that.
Okay. Mr. John.
Is that winter storm use in the estimate for what both bodies have styled to act to?
The winter, the winter time storage is going to need to be some sort of reservoir. It could be the A-plus water going into the underground aquifer and pulling that out.
So we don't know where that's going at?
We're not to that point yet.
We don't have the price tag on it.
This is, this is strictly looking at.
So you said you'll be able to move water probably in winter?
We would be looking at getting everything in place so that next irrigation season, so March, April, we'd be able to pump water.
Okay, not winter, spring. And then when do, would you see, when would you project to see a, the total estimated removal to come to fruition? Will it start in March or April? When would we expect that pump to show us the decline?
So, I mean, obviously.
Of course, it's contingent on rain, but take that out of there. What?
Sure.
Do you have an estimate?
So you can see from the graphs that I gave that pretty much the height every year is in April, around the third week of April, just seems to be when we have the highest amount of water in Swan Lake. And the lowest level of water is down usually typically in November. So when you talk about pumping water out, we'd be starting with that irrigation season, be similar timeframe, end of March, first of April, we'd start pumping. Again, you could have storms and you're not suggesting what that would be. We're looking at a potential of, you know, anywhere from, say, 600 to 1,000 acre feet of water we'd be able to remove, and that is equal to a half, a half a foot approaching close to a foot. And just was mentioned early on in Councilmember Duer's comments at the start of the meeting, there is one thing else that City of Reno has done, and that's been the Flow Shade Project. We'll see the fruition of that also, which is, could be equivalent to another six inches or more of lake drop just from not putting the effluent there, but sending raw sewage over through our pipeline into Tommae.
Okay. And what class of water is discharged from both of these facilities into the lake?
So from the City of Reno, the City of Reno plant, we discharge a Class A effluent into Swan Lake, which is the same water we use, same class of water we use for irrigating Sierra Sage Golf Course, North Valley Sports Complex, and Mary's Park.
And what about from the Washoe County one?
Mr. John, time has expired.
He spoke during my whole time. I didn't get to, I didn't, I'm not used to this. I didn't get to say all my questions at once and then let a staff member answer me.
We're in somebody else's chamber, Commissioner.
For the record, again, Duane Smith, Washoe County. When we do a very infrequent discharge to the ply area, which is about twice a year, a total of about 65 acre feet, that water has, has met the NDP requirements. We do treat that water, but when it comes through the evaporator.
What class is the water that goes into Swan Lake?
It's a little bit, I have to explain it because it's a, it's a little bit, on the technical side, we have our permit for Class C, but as it goes through the process.
What is the constraints on effluent of water? I, he answered my question. I asked my question. It's answered. I don't need a diatribe. I thought you wanted me to keep this short. Mr. Smith, what class of water will be discharged via sprinklers to this ag land?
That's the last question, Commissioner, until someone else. We have other commissioners.
Aye, aye, sir. Thank you.
While Washoe County, again, Duane Smith for the record, is looking at some of the same opportunities for land application, the project that we're talking about here is driven by the City of Reno, so we're.
Isn't it coming from Swan Lake?
We're in support of that.
But what would the water quality be? Because aren't there constraints for agriculture?
Are there any other commissioners that have questions?
I'm sorry, I know nothing about this, so I have a lot of questions, especially if we're going to put another 2.5 million to something we've already spent 14 million on.
I don't think that's in front of us today, Commissioner.
Of course it is.
Spending $2.5 million of Washoe County money, that's not in front of us.
What's in front of us?
That's not.
Maybe you could educate me. What's in front of us?
Well, when we get to that part.
Well, it's in the, it's in the staff report. You should be able to tell me. You approved the agenda.
Mr. Smith?
Am I wrong or right?
Is Washoe County spending money on this?
The City of Reno project, our participation in this is to help make sure that the water quality continues, that we look at both the water quality of Swan Lake and also at the water quality associated with the site, which is a, proposed to be a Washoe County site.
But didn't, doesn't it say 2.5 million from our water sales from our water rights? Mr. Solaro?
Mr. Solaro.
If I may, for the record, interim County Manager Solero, Commissioner, the item that
Commissioner, the item that is up for, item 5.5, actually does deal with an affirmation for use of $2.5 million.
Right.
Not on this project, on projects to come before the Board of County Commissioners for potential approval on the August 27th meeting.
So, why is it on the agenda if we're not approving it?
We need to make sure that the Board affirms the use of that money from 2017, so that we can plan budgets to bring it forward to you. Just an affirmation that you would like to use it for flood-related expenses, so...
I don't want to use it for that, so, that's affirmed.
Any other commissioners? Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. I'm gonna now send it back to you, Madam Clerk, to send to the airport authority for questions.
Madam Mayor, transition to the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority for their questions on item 5.2.
Ms. CJ.
Test, test. Okay, real simple question. What crops would you be growing out there?
We would look to see what type of crops would work best for the soil types. Many, there's been discussion about alfalfa, something like that, but it would be most likely some sort of a grass or alfalfa crop.
Other questions? Rosa?
One, and I don't know if it's for Dean or you, John. Just to get back to, I think, the Councilwoman's comments at the beginning regarding development and the easement process. If there was an easement that came in for a development, and maybe this is for Dean, that would have to go through the permanent process, correct, on the utilities? What we're talking about today and what we're discussing is a temporary easement for the pipe to be above ground.
For the record, Dean Schultz, Reno Tahoe Airport Authority. That is correct. That's the distinguishing feature between the temporary easement and a permanent easement is, there's, it's on a short-term basis, and it's an above-ground pipe installation, so it's not disturbing the soil. So, that's why a shorter, quicker process can be done for this temporary project versus a more permanent underground solution.
And then, the second question, I believe, and Vince had brought this, I think, forward to the airport, was on the crops itself, to actually have crops growing on the airport property. Can you explain why we're prohibited from doing that, Dean, as far as having that happen on the airport property?
It's an obvious concern to the airport because of the wildlife attractant that would be associated with growing crops. I mean, obviously, it's a food source for animals, it's a potential coverage for animals, and then, small animals, ground animals attract birds of prey, which do not mix well with aircraft. So, that's why we don't encourage farming operations in and around the airport, and we would certainly want to work with the city and the county on what crops are being proposed, to make sure that that doesn't create a wildlife hazard problem.
And that would also trigger the more permanent review by the FAA, correct?
Correct. That is certainly a concern of the Federal Aviation Administration, so yes, they would certainly want to get involved with looking at those if we were trying to grow crops on the airport.
Thank you.
Ms. Steve Rose?
Mr. Schultz, just a quick clarification on a question that Commissioner Jung asked earlier. So, from the FAA's standpoint, and based on the rules and regulations that we have to follow, does it go from temporary to permanent when you put the pipe under the ground or after we pass a certain time period? Or when do we encroach on our FAA rules?
So, there are two aspects to the permanent versus a temporary. One is the duration, and I would like to perhaps clarify that there is not a specific date and time that is hard and fast, but we are looking at this as a two- to three-year, based on the discussions we've had, and we are looking at this as a temporary solution. But if it were to go for a longer period, three, beyond three years, and, you know, I had said five earlier, but, or if it goes into underground situation, either of those can trigger the need to involve the FAA.
So, today, we're not committing to anything other than the temporary portion?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No other questions, thank you.
Madam Mayor, with that, I recommend transition to item 5.3. This is a recommendation to take action on a possible approval of agreement between Washoe County and the City of Reno.
Okay. Mr. Flansburgh.
So, for the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works, City of Reno. You've seen our proposal, what this would entail. This basically is the agreement between Washoe County and City of Reno for the ability to access the two parcels that are listed there in the American Flat Road site. If, could I ask for the presentation I gave previously to come back up? So, just to be clear on that American Flat site, it would be the large parcel, and then that smaller parcel in the top middle there where you see the semi-circles for, that, you know, represent the pivots. So, those are the two parcels that we're talking about. This really just allows City of Reno to occupy the land for these purposes, and we would look for your direction.
Hey, can I, Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Solaro, would you, would you frame for us what is before us today? Frame for the commission and the viewers?
Absolutely, thank you. For the record, Dave Solaro. Commissioners, as you've heard today, the City of Reno has requested the use of Washoe County land for the project to apply water to aid in evaporation of Swan Lake and lower the lake levels, to assist in storage capacity within the current projections that Washoe County has been maintaining for the past few years. This interlocal agreement is the avenue which would allow the city to utilize the land for their project. Washoe County acquired this land and utilizes it as open space for airport air race buffer location, so that we don't have continued growth in this, in this location. So, it is vacant land at this point, and we have used it for the past few years for that air race buffer. This allows full control of the surface of the land of the City of Reno with reclamation of the land upon completion. And as you will recall from the April 9th and April 29th board meetings, land application was one of the possible means to pursue from the matrix of potential projects. The City of Reno has determined that land application has benefits to the community, and with the goal of lowering lake levels for increased storage capacity in the near future, staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Okay, thank you. So...
I apologize, Madam Mayor, if I can charge in here.
I'm sorry.
Just as we had previously discussed of opening all of your items together, so I would just confirm that we'll continue on with presentations after questions prior to the bodies making any actions. We can take public comment at the end of 5.5. So, respectfully requesting that you do not take action at this time.
Okay. Oh, I see, you want to hold...
I want you to take questions now, but not an action until we get through everything.
Right, until the motion at the end.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got it.
So, we'll turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. So, at this time, I'm gonna ask my body if they would like to ask any questions. Yeah, go ahead. Come on in, Doris.
Yes, I have a question. So, we discussed some issues about water quality. I hope that whatever we do here today, that we could get your commitment to work with the other, the Health Department and so on, and make sure that whatever you're proposing, the water quality is appropriate. So, to that end, in order to be able to vote on this, I'm not really sure what we're proposing. Is it land application? Is it growing stuff? Is it misting? Because I saw a reference to industrial misters. What is the project?
Thank you for the clarification. So, our intent would be to put this property into agricultural use.
Okay.
At the very least, we want to look at land application. Either one of those will be sprinkler irrigation, not misting.
Okay. Okay.
And as far as the commitment from us, this parcel is very important to our region. We have spent a lot of time to research it. We will make sure that the water quality is what it needs to be. We'll make sure the soil probes are in place, and we'll work cooperatively with Tom Wharf and Washoe County on the operations up there to ensure that we didn't, we don't do anything that would be detrimental for our long-term plans.
Okay. And if the project's land application, which means there's no plants there, that it's just, are you gonna like flatten out an area to contain this, or what's the envisionment, I guess?
And all of those things need to be vetted out, and ideally, you know, we, if we get the okay to move forward, we want to then seek, you know, some farmers, we want to seek through irrigation specialists to really understand what this is going to be, so we can move forward with the project.
All right, thank you.
All right. I think, Councilwoman Doris, you brought up some really good points. So, my second point would be, in order for me to also feel comfortable sort of with the direction that you're recommending, is that we actually have a secondary testing source of this water instead of Washoe County. I would much rather feel comfortable if we were doing our own or another third party, something to that effect. And I think, you know, we'd all feel a little bit better, and the residents would feel a little bit better knowing that we're getting different testing samples from different entities.
Mayor Sheehy, I think that's a great idea. We would want to test the water, and then, we would also test the water at the end of the pipeline, right? So, not just at the lake, but also at the end of the pipeline.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Two minutes of questions from any of my councilmembers. Councilwoman Breckus.
Yeah, I mean, I share some of that apprehension, and in particular, I know there's some really well-intended people you've been having conversations with from the private sector. A lot of them were in the development field who showed up last night, and they're nervous, you know, and I get that. They've got projects underway. But, the way this just popped up, and I remember very well the April 29th meeting when this agriculture concept came forward, is making me uncomfortable that all options are being explored and the transparency of the process. Likewise, the science. I haven't heard a scientist come forward and explain any of these issues to us. I mean, you're the technician, an engineering technician, but that's different. Have you had any conversations with any farmers?
So, for your, for the record, I'm a professional engineer for the state of Nevada, and not just an engineering technician.
Yeah, oh, no, I mean, the technical field. I meant, I meant a technical field.
You don't just play one on TV?
Yeah.
No.
But what about farmers? Have you talked to farmers?
So, we have had some preliminary conversations with some of the farmers. Again, we've looked at different types of irrigation equipment, we've looked at different types of piping that we would use up here. As you can imagine, one of the things with a pipe that's underground is that you have a confined area, meaning it's compacted all the way around the pipe. When you run a pipe above ground, it isn't confined, so it may be a different type of pipe. And so, those are the type of things that we have to look at to make sure that is being, that that's what we're following. So, a pipe above ground is way different than a pipe below ground, and that's something that would be permanent.
Yeah, it's like the workaround. When we had the near catastrophe at Tom Wharf, I envision it like the workaround. Okay, thank you. I guess, just one other thing is, I'm not so sure that I'm gonna be able to be in a position to support this, and really, I tried to get us there last night, but on the finances. You've got some Public Works crew working on this. The ditches in southwest Reno that are risked are, seem to be a forgotten thought, and that makes me nervous for the people I represent. But I'm really starting to feel the need to look at the big price town tag. I see a world where in the next six to eight years, the City of Reno sewer rate payers, those are connections and rate payers that are, have to spend a half billion dollars on sewer improvements. When you bring in Tom Wharf, when you bring in this project, when you talk about laying out the lines to Beadell Flat, and I'll tell you what, in lieu of anyone else bringing in any numbers, because no one is, I'm free to say that. I know what the CIP for Tom Wharf shows on the dawn, that Sparks wants yesterday. I know that the TROA, the shade, is, may come with a big price tag. You've got $55 million you want to issue next Saturday, or by December. So, I'm getting really nervous about these numbers, and we're not exploring them. We're not probing them at all. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
If I may...
Go right ahead, please.
I just want to state, staff is coming before you today because we are also concerned. We're concerned with the elevation of Swan Lake. The repeated time, it's been three years, we have not seen that step down that we would expect because we've had the exceptional water years. We don't know what the next winter's gonna bring, or the winter after that's gonna bring. We're bringing an option to consider, and we're just seeking direction.
But if I may, you're still proposing hookups, you're still proposing development.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Reese?
Madam Mayor, Mr. Flansburgh, this conversation has been, you know, important to me. I am someone who last night said, "I want action and not words." So, while I appreciate that some folks will continue to ask questions, talk about bumps in the night, meetings that they weren't invited to, all that sort of thing, I really want us to go do something. And if this is one of the things that you're recommending as the tool in the toolbox, I'm in support of that. What I want to make sure is that, number one, it is something that will have an impact. I understand, it's not a permanent solution, it's a temporary one to reduce that water level as quickly as we can. I think we've sat around for eight years, I think, some of the councilmembers have been on this council, and we are still where we are today, and so I'm looking for action. So, in the interest of your project that you've brought today, I realize you don't have a dog in the fight, but I do. I'm looking for us to find solutions, and in that regard, is this one of the options which you believe is an appropriate one, given the circumstances, given the financial constraints, that you can support and recommend?
Great question.
Thank you for the question. This definitely is one I can support, and just for the reasons I stated, this gives us something that's additive each year. A half a foot removed from this project this year doesn't start over the following year. It's additive. It means if we get a half foot out this year and a half a foot out next year or more, and I suspect we're actually gonna get more than just a half foot, those are gonna be added each year to get that lake level down to where we have volume storage that we can feel comfortable with, with what kind of storms we may see coming in the future. What I also like about this project is if we put this parcel into agricultural use, we have the ability to switch that water source from the lake water to actual effluent and be one of the items that we've discussed about expanding our reuse options. That has to come with a winter time storage, but those two things together will certainly be a benefit to the City of Reno and to the resiliency of this area. So, I do feel that this is a project that's worthwhile to pursue.
Madam Mayor? I, one second. I really appreciate your honesty, because you just stood up here and said that you were very concerned. And I think, you know, kind of reading back a lot of these studies, this goes back to like the 1980s, kind of, you know, from there. And I want people to really realize that we're not saying that there isn't a problem. We're not saying that the water isn't bad. We're not saying, you know, that you're not flooded. We're here saying, we're coming with a solution. And I really appreciate all your hard work. I know it's something that keeps you up at night. Again, last night, I said it, it's all gonna take all of us in this room to collaborate and bring the best...
Last night and this morning, actually.
And this morning, exactly. There you go. To bring the best possible solution. And I'm not doubting that, but I'm, obviously, I'm not an engineer or a scientist, and so I don't want this question to come off as negative. But how do we know this is like the best one? I mean, I know that you've been talking to experts, but I think, instead of someone just saying, "Oh, you know, this guy from the City of Reno just woke up this morning and said, 'This looks like a good plan.'" I mean, you know, give us a little bit of comfort.
Mayor Sheehy, we don't, we, I can tell you, we don't know if this is the best plan. What we do know is this is a plan that we can act on and we can do quickly. The ones that we're looking at for other purposes that could be better, longer term, they're just, they're two, three, four years out before you could vet all the issues with that to understand that would work. This one is one of those things that's simple. We know we can, we can enact on this quickly and that we can make a difference quickly.
Make a difference quickly. And I think that's really important to be, you know, he's up here being incredibly honest. Sometimes, we don't have all the solutions. Sometimes, it is, you know, the private sector. So, I just, you know, I want to say thank you for that. This is transparency, folks. I really want you to know this, and he's being very honest, giving you straight answers. You know, we don't know, but to get it, get rid of that water now, do something now. You don't have that time. You have water, you know, flooding your homes. You don't have more time. So, I really appreciate that. All right. I, but that doesn't mean that we go and, you know, take bad water and put it somewhere else. I don't, I don't want any misconceptions about that. Okay, Councilwoman Doris?
You know, I just want, just a wrap-up comment for me. If we do move forward with this later in our meeting, I just really want to compliment and thank the county for being willing to donate this land, and it really demonstrates the beginning of what I think will be a long-term partnership if we do move forward. We did set up a committee last night. We're gonna have lots of ideas. We may ultimately want to join our committee with a county committee. You know, we want to get our feet, feet under us and get started, but that could come down the road. I don't know what the value of this land is. Are you talking about 100 acres, or, I know there's 500 acres at American Flat, but 125 acres, maybe?
I believe it's about 450 acres.
Total that would be sprinkled?
Well, we're going to probably sprinkle every corner, but we're going to do the best we can to maximize that.
Right.
We have a little bit of topography to work with, so you, you know.
All I'm, all I'm trying to point out is that the land is valuable, no matter whose land it is. And that's a valuable consideration that the county would be bringing to the table. $3 million is a heck of a lot of money in our world and the city of Reno world. We don't have the big bucks that any, you know, we have pretty small bucks, let me just put it that way. And I would, I guess I'd make a further ask for the county to see if they would also like to come forward with some cash to help out with the project. You know, you don't ask, you don't receive. So I already, I recognize the great, you know, offer. Additionally, what the airport's doing, allowing us to cross their land, potentially without a payment for an easement at this point. You know, easements are valuable. That's, you know, foregoing valuable consideration. So everybody's bringing something to the table to make this work. That's the kind of conversation we were having with the developers last night. What can they bring to the table to help us make this work and get the community back to sustainability? So anyway, I thought I'd just at least ask, throw it down on the table. There may be, in addition to your quote, 14 million or whatever you spent, there may be another bit of funds you can also bring to the table. Thank you very much and thank you for, for, you know, entertaining this with us.
All right. I apologize because sometimes when you're not in the room, we overlook you. So Councilwoman Jordan, are you on the phone?
I am.
Thank you.
Thank you for that voice from the sky. I did want to, I did want to say, from a, it is an interesting perspective to be on the phone and only have the one sensory that's picking up on everything. And I do have to note that, excuse me, when, when the rules of decorum aren't followed and people talk over each other, it's very difficult for someone who is maybe online and just listening to understand. So that's just one point. The thing I did want to point out is, you know, I've listened to all the details. I value very much that staff has spent a tremendous amount of resources over the last few years and a tremendous amount of time over the last few weeks and to come up with a short, I'd call it an immediate solution to get some of this water off of here. I think the residents want to see those HESCO barriers come down as soon as possible and start getting some assurance that the water level is coming down and not going up. Do we, do we know that this will be perfect and get us where we ultimately want to go? No, we don't. But I would remind the council that we have been very, very progressive in our interest in finding new and creative ways to solve problems. And I would point to either the Reno Works project or the Dicks Improvement District or the dorms project. None of those three existed in our community and they are proving to be game changers. And so I would just say, don't necessarily be the enemy of the good and let's not be paralyzed by analysis. It's been too long. And I cannot thank staff enough and all the resources you've put towards coming up with these solutions in the private sector and the airport authority and the county. It's time to act on purpose.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, any other questions from my body? Oh, go ahead. Councilwoman Weber.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say, really, to the Reno Tahoe Airport Authority and to Washoe County, we absolutely appreciate the opportunity to work together with you. Thank you for what you're doing. It's just important that you know that it's a great concept here that we're all working together, at least on this project and hopefully many, many more. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from my council? Seeing that there are none, I'm going to send it to Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Mr. Slarrell, I have a few questions, but I'll save those. But I want you to just outline this for us again. Are we actually giving the city of Reno this land or are we donating the use of this land?
This is set up for donation of the use of the land.
So it is not?
So Washoe County will continue to have ownership of the land.
Will own the land, okay. I have some other questions here in just a second. That's, that will frame up my, my additional questions. Commissioners, Mr. Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions. And Mr. Smith, if I can have you approach the podium for me. You know, before Mr. Smith gets started, a couple of things I want to point out. As to total tollers spent since 2017, Washoe County has expended 7.5 million of our, of our capital dollars towards expenses related to Swan Lake. The state has expended 1.3 million, just roughly under 1.4 million towards this, for a grand total of $8.9 million towards the mitigation of the Swan Lake. So for, that's just for clarification, I just received those numbers. But as it pertains to the future use of our, our property, Mr. Smith, you know, what, I mean, future loose, I mean, if we go forward with this de-watering program and allow Reno to utilize, is it going to change the future use of this land in perpetuity?
For the record, Duane Smith, Washoe County. Thank you for the question. Based on the temporary use, based on the, on the water quality testing that both at the lake and at the end of the pipe, we don't see any issues at this time that would impair the future use of this property. Having said that, if we do see something during this temporary project, we would certainly address and act on that.
And there's a clause in our agreement that allows us to stop that with, in terminate that clause if we see that being a problem?
Absolutely. Again, that, that is correct.
Great. And then also, this is one thing, one point I'd like to make, you know, I believe our staff will continue to work jointly with the city of Reno staff to continue to monitor this project, to see the efficacy of this project and continue to work and make sure that, because this is not just the only project that I believe the county is going to pursue, that as we've pointed out later this month, we will bring something back to our board for a further discussion about those potential expenditures that we could use for an additional project. Is that correct?
That's correct. This project is to help support the city Reno's effort on this American Flat property of ours. We will be coming on the 27th with our own approaches associated with short-term strategies to help minimize some of these concerns that we have. As Mr. Flansburgh stated, it's the same on our side. We're concerned about the fluctuations in the lake and cleaning, or creating space to allow for when we do get storm and flood events to the greatest degree possible. So yes, we are in support of the city Reno project and we are certainly looking forward to coming to you with those projects of our own.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Herman.
I was just doing a little math and it's going to take us probably 10 years to get it, get this down to the, where we could actually take the barriers down, it looks like to me. Thank you.
All right. All right, while our chair stepped away, I'll thank you, Commissioner Herman. Are there any questions? Commissioner Jung.
How many years do you believe this will take to get the water down enough to remove the HESCO barriers?
For the record, Duane Smith, that's a very difficult question. We certainly want to take down the barriers and return things as quickly as possible, but we are at the mercy of the storm and flood events. We do see approximately two and a half vertical feet of evaporation every year and coupled with the city Reno project and Washoe County's projects, our, our goal is to create as much space as possible in the lake. And of course, not only the goal of taking down the HESCO barriers, but all the other things associated with protection of our community and making sure that our community is safe and secure. I really wish I had a.
Using the average numbers that you provide, maybe Mr. Flansburgh could answer the question. Using the average numbers you've provided to us, how many years will it take to the water, for the water to recede enough to remove the HESCO barriers? Just use the median numbers.
We have what's called a stage storage curve. Stage storage curve says that at the elevation of the lake at the highest levels, the 423.3, it's about 10,000 acre feet. We receive about 3,900 acre feet, 4,000 acre feet for a nice round number of evaporation every year.
So how many years?
What's going back into the lake, you know, is, is based on the stormwater. So Commissioner Jung, if you can tell me.
Just on average?
If you can tell me how much precipitation we're going to get in the valley.
I can't tell you that, but I can look back and make an average, maybe over 10 years and say, this is how long we assume this would take. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just wondering.
I think in normal precipitation years.
Yep.
We could see the lake level down to a very manageable level, meaning down to what levels we would have seen in the past, in as early as three years. I don't think it'd be longer than five.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung.
The only reason is I'm going to cut everyone off right now. We've been sitting here for two hours. I'd like everyone to sort of get up and take a 10-minute break. So at this time, we will reconvene in 10 minutes. All right.
This guy.
You need a Tums right now, you know that, right?
No, it's not.
Magnesium.
It's my leg.
Yeah, I know, but you need it.
It's my left leg.
Anti-cancer.
It's the calcium in the Tums.
Sure, how are you?
Yes.
No, I was trying so hard. I know.
Do you have one?
Good, okay, let's go, let's go.
I wonder if my line.
I could see you also, I didn't see you earlier. Yeah, let's do that, that sounds like great fun.
I'm better.
Great fun, a lot more fun than this.
As long as I can stretch my leg, okay, let's go, I'm ready.
I'm always surprised. My mother would. I'm killing with right now and I was like, no.
She gave it to the pool. I know what it is.
Yeah, that's great. Gotta keep healthy. That's my birthday, I'm not thinking of that. That's why you didn't wish me happy birthday.
We can move that to something.
I love life.
That's just because.
Hi, how are you doing?
Yeah.
That happens, it does happen to the best of us, emptiness, vast cavities and crickets. Yep. Well, good, I'm glad that.
Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burke Bigler, will you continue, and I apologize, please accept my sincere apologies for the interruption.
No problem, I've done that before. So, my question was, I mean, actually, it's not a question, just a clarification. So, part of this project that City of Reno is putting together is to also stop their effluent from going into the lake. I don't think you're putting effluent into the lake right now, are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Burke Bigler, for that question. For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. City of Reno during the summer months, almost entirely all of the effluent that's being produced goes to irrigation purposes. And that was a point that I would like to just make in general for understanding. We are limited on how much we can go out because when you're using all of your resource in the summertime, we can't expand. So, we need that wintertime use that we can store, just like South Truckee Meadows Plant has the Hutt Picker Reservoir, and you're able to use that in the winter and then draw from it. We need something similar for wintertime storage.
So, the point, I think, that I wanted to make, Mr. Chair, is that I think that the water level is going to drop significantly more, if in fact that is an issue. And I think that a lot of the citizens in Lemon Valley think that the effluent that goes from the county plant in Lemon Valley and the city plant instead really is creating an increase in the lake. And I think if that's really part of that, we're going to see much more of a decrease than I think our scientists and our engineers can project. So, I'm glad to see that that's part of the issue that the City of Reno is looking at, as well as pumping water to put up out of the lake itself. So, I think clearly we've got to lower the lake level. And these are two very good ways to start. And the county will have some that are brought before them later this month. So, maybe we will have some other projects that will really show that we are moving forward as we really like to move forward on short-term solutions, so that we can also work on long-term solutions to resolve the problem in the long run. Anyway, I just wanted to make that comment, thank you.
And for clarification, the City of Reno did complete their flow shape project internal to the plant that allows us to move some of the inflow of the sewage coming in to a forest main that then takes it to our Tom Whorf Plant. And that's, again, that wintertime, that'll be running, and that will be helping to not have that effluent go to the.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, is anyone else, before I chime in here? So, comment before I ask a question. You know, we asked to have a matrix produced that gave a number of possible solutions. I wouldn't say that they're all the possible solutions, because who knows what could be on the table. But that matrix tried to outline a number of possible solutions. I don't see any one single solution as being the silver bullet. I think that it's going to be a number of solutions that come forward and a number of measures such as what we're talking about today. But, Mr. Smith and Mr. Flansburgh, the question that I have is, please briefly outline the reclamation plan. How will we deal with soil contamination? And when we get done with the agricultural product or project, as well as there may ultimately be a product, what will this property look like? Will we bring it back to, just like mines have to do? Will we reclaim it so that essentially when, if someone rides their horse through this property or they're out there, will they know that this occurred in 10 years?
Great question, Commissioner Hartung. In putting it to agricultural use, as you can imagine, you're going into your vegetation type things. Often, when we have a plant matter that is not desirable, we want to plant desirable plants to outcompete those, right? So, when we have invasive species that way, what you're talking about is, once this is completed and if we stopped watering it and using it for an agricultural use, what would happen to it? It's going to go back to a general native state. It may require that we plant a native seed mix on there as kind of the final crop. So, I think we'll have to look depending on what is actually planted there and what that natural state would look like. Is it going to be something that's going to kind of have a little bit of alfalfa, let's say, that's growing up pockets here and there, but it's got the other native vegetation that's growing up around it, and then over time, the native vegetation takes hold? Or is it something that's going to be more immediate? So, I think that's what, I think that's really what you're looking at. It's not like we're going to go on there and set up a rock crusher or do some other industrial use like that. It's really looking at agricultural use.
Right, no, I understand completely. Mr. Smith, would you talk about the potential for soil contamination and how would we deal with that?
Well, again, for the record, Dwayne Smith, Washoe County. As we, as I stated before, water quality testing is an important part of both what the Swan Lake looks like and then also what that water looks like as it's being applied on the property. So, looking at these test results will help us gauge if there did happen to become a problem, then per the agreement, we can then terminate the operation, we can address, fix, adjust, whatever we would need to. So, I don't believe that there's any concern because of the oversight and because of the continued water quality testing that we would, either party, because neither one of us wants to have any long-term issues, right? We want to make sure that everything is done collaboratively and make sure that we don't have any long-term issues. We would address anything as we move forward.
Okay, I know I'm over time. Commissioner, is anyone else? Commissioner Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last question I have is, for Mr. Flansburgh and Mr. Smith, we talked tonight about one specific project, but this is not an absolute project. This is a dynamic project, is it not? This is an ever-changing project as we continually monitor it, is that correct?
Great question, it is a changing project, meaning we don't know all the specifics. As I showed in the presentation, originally we were thinking two big pivots and show them nice symmetrically there. You get out there and see where the road is, and you go, okay, we're going to have to alter what that is. It may be a different type of irrigation system. The intent and purpose of what we would do on that property still remains the same. It would be land application and agricultural use.
I appreciate that, and I think that's one thing that we need to continue to put on the record and address here is that these things are dynamic and change continuously through evaluation and continued observation of the projects and their efficacy. And so, if we don't do something, we'll never understand really what's going to be effective. So, we'll have to get out there and start somewhere, and I believe this is possibly the best start we have for us. And then, as the county evolves, I mean, as the city's project evolves, the county can also monitor that and continue. And like you said, we have a period of time that we can look and continue to approach different projects. And this is not just one. There's going to be a multitude of projects that we're going to look at as we continue down this path to really, truly mitigate this problem and de-water that lake so that for future use, that is going to be sustainable out there, not, it's not going to be a detriment to the citizens. So, I just want to make that very clear, that we're no longer, we're not talking in absolutes tonight. We're talking about dynamic programs and dynamic projects as we move forward, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, is anyone else? Okay, so my final thought is just, I want to make sure that we're indemnified and that it gets returned to some form of a natural state with, you know, sage and et cetera. And I mean, I agree with my colleagues that this is a piece of the solution and it's better than doing nothing. And so, I think that that's the ultimate goal here, is how can we be a great, or a regional partner to a final set of solutions? Okay, Commissioners?
May I, Madam Mayor, may I ask a question of our legal counsel related to comments Mr. Hartung just made?
Hold on, let him.
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do you have any other Commissioners that want to make questions?
I don't believe I do. Commissioner Burke Bigler, Commissioner Herman, Commissioner Lucy, okay?
Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman Burke has two minutes.
As we know, the City Council just last night decided to appeal the jury judgment up to the Nevada Supreme Court. One of the contested points during that proceeding was that the county is not a party to that lawsuit. That was a determination that the judge made when the city tried to join the county. I'm wondering, Mr. Hartung, and I'll direct my comments to you, when you talked indemnification, does that indemnification extend to us taking any action as we proceed with our appeal to bring the county in? Would you be tying that to this agreement?
How could that possibly be, Councilwoman? I, we're talking about the use of a piece of property. We're talking about how it would be returned back to a natural vegetative state. That is the extent of the question, please don't try to draw anything into.
Okay, I'm just wondering about indemnification.
Those are your words, not mine.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no other questions from our bodies, so I'm going to send it back to you for Airport Authority questions.
We will transition now to Airport Authority trustee questions at this time on item 5.3 for the agreement.
Any questions? No questions, thank you.
Madam Mayor, with that, I recommend transition to item 4.5.
5.4?
Excuse me, 5.4, this is authorization to award.
I know, it's been a long 24, 48 hours.
It's been, it's been a lot of hours in this room in the last 24.
I walked to the wrong car this morning, it's all good.
Half of them in this room, yes ma'am.
All right, go ahead.
So, for the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works, City of Reno. So, this is the actual just authorization to staff to award one or more contracts to the best bid in accordance with competitive bidding laws. Again, this is for the flood mitigation, de-watering, description of the project that we have given in a total amount not to exceed $3 million. This allows us the opportunity to move quickly. And the item would be, also give the ability for the mayor to execute the contract documents.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, Madam Clerk, I believe before we do that, we need to take public comment, correct?
We have one more item, Madam Mayor.
Oh, no, one more, okay.
Mm-hmm, so we'd just be looking for questions from the bodies at this time?
Okay, Councilwoman Burke has two minutes.
Do you have an engineer's design, do we go out for design consulting services on this?
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. We have been working with some of the engineers in the region for potential solutions, but we have been doing this work in-house.
So, you'll stamp it, it'll be stamped in-house?
We will, yes, we will be stamped in-house.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions from my council members? Seeing that there are none, I'm going to send it to your chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Flansburgh on item 5.4, that's where we are. Okay, seeing none, I will close, thank you.
Madam Mayor, transition to the Airport Authority trustees for questions on item 5.4.
Questions? No questions, thank you.
No questions, with that, Madam Mayor, recommend transition to item 5.5. This is recommendation to affirm the use of funds received.
If I may, Madam Mayor.
Go right ahead.
For the record, Dave Solero, interim county manager. This item is specific to the Board of County Commissioners, and this is an item whereby staff is seeking the affirmation from this board on a decision that was made in 2017 to utilize proceeds from the sale of water rights that the General Fund of Washoe County sold to the Pyramid Lake Pike Tribe for use. In 2017, it was in response to the flood disasters in January and February. The board directed use of those funds for those flood-related items. Since then, Washoe County has used that money for a couple of projects that have been FEMA reimbursed. So, the balance, of course, there was a 25% match that Washoe County had to have there. So, the balance is roughly $2.6 million of water rights monies available. Looking for an affirmation from the board that you'd like to continue or have staff continue to utilize that as a funding source for projects that will be coming back to you in August, on August 27th of this year. Just wanting to make sure that the board is amenable to staff utilizing that as a source of funds as we continue to develop those projects and move forward.
Okay, so Mr. Solero, just let me, those are for additional projects and additional mitigations.
That is correct. So, one of the items is the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Again, we have the, you know, the home purchase program that we've been working through, there's a 25% match there.
Yes.
Direction from the board for lake containment, so this is some short-term things that we could do this summer to make sure that we are absolutely prepared for this upcoming winter. And the other item is potential continued evaporation enhancement, whether that's land application on other pieces of property, separate and aside from the project we're hearing today, or potential aeration of that water, although we've heard a lot of pushback on that. Certainly, that's one of the things we're also looking at, you know, as a potential. So, we will be bringing those specific items back, but this is not in, not for consideration for utilizing this $2.5 million currently today on this project.
Understood, okay, and so, we're going to look at things for efficacy, we're going to look at things for safety, we're going to look at a number of different perspectives, or from a number of different perspectives. Also, do the potential for PDM grants fall into this $2.5 million, or would that be over and above?
So, this is currently funding that we have in our capital improvement program right now within Washoe County. We can utilize that for match money for PDM grants, those types of things. But we do have a series of projects that we would like to bring forward that are going to utilize some funding.
Wonderful, okay, all right, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I don't know whether this is the appropriate time. This is still, I mean, you're in control of the meeting, so I didn't mean to.
All right, I'm going to, just before you take any action, I want to make sure that we hear from the public. So, I'm going to stick with Madam Clerk's decorum.
I think we have questions.
Okay, great, so questions from my body? No? Okay, then I'm going to send it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burke Bigler, oh, I'm sorry, did you have any? Commissioner Lucy, Commissioner Herman, no questions? Okay, all right.
Madam Mayor, this is not a vote that we will all be participating in, am I correct?
No, no, we'll bring it back.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
No, no, but.
And we'll let you know, we'll go down and we'll say, yeah, don't worry, we'll say Washoe County vote only.
But, but there have been, there have been things that have pertained to the City of Reno that we also have asked questions on, and so I think it's only fair that everyone gets to ask questions with respect to each item that's on the agenda collectively, thank you, Madam.
All right, thank you.
Madam Mayor, with that, I will ask if there are any questions from the Airport Authority trustees on this item?
No questions.
Seeing none, Madam Mayor, we will transition into public comment for the action items. Lori Beach would like to speak, followed by George Still.
Okay, great. Lori Beach, for the record, again. The flooding of the past two years into a closed base in a Swan Lake, we're still here, we're still talking about it. I appreciate that we're starting to move thoughtfully, not only of, as you as a fiduciary responsibility of us, the taxpayers' money, be it City of Reno or be it county. We have to understand, we're going to go back to the glass, everybody wants to use that glass, so let's keep with the glass. We start our season in 2017 with it empty. We flooded. We never went back down to an empty glass so our lake bed can dry and reabsorb. We can't reabsorb, we keep going back every year and we're still not drying. Here are the pictures from, and I'm not trying to be salacious here, these are just from a simple, heavy, the last heavy rain we had, what, three, four weeks ago? And we, just this little bit, this is what happens right now, because we have absolutely no absorption right now. So, I mean, a lot of y'all saw these last night, they're just, it's just from that really quick rain we had. Everything causes flooding to us now. While the pipeline is a great start, and I do support the fact that it's potentially not just another Band-Aid, we still must look at the continued discharge, whether it be natural snow rain, man-made, person-made, into the Swan Lake. This temporary pipeline could have to become permanent. While I'm neutral on the pipeline, I cannot support the aeration into the Lemon Valley, but I won't go into that much because it seems like that may be potentially off the table here. It is my hope, I know there's certain rules and regulations that go to the contract bids, that we give priority to our local-owned, local-grown, local-supported, and that they be given a couple, boost up that ladder to get that. I learned a lot from the developers that spoke last night. Yes, I have adjusted some of my thoughts on what we're, what they are also going through. Maybe true local developers can get some consideration on their fees and other, their permit fees and other fees. Say a local's discount, like we get at the buffet. This is done all the time with our big companies that we're trying to bring in with tax breaks. You, the council, and the redevelopment have attracted these entities. I understand, not saying good or bad, but we must look forward, and I'm glad we're moving away from gaming as a source of revenue, so that we can move away from a service wage community. The other, real quick, in the 17 seconds I have, we have been told for two years there's nothing wrong with this water, so I do not know why the county members are so, keep driving home. Is this going to be safe to our little land out there in the flats? You keep telling me for the past two and a half years, it's safe, it's safe, it'll be fine to blow it out there.
Madam Mayor, our next public comment is from George Still, followed by Michael DiMartini.
Good evening all, my name is George Still, for the record. I'm kind of representing my wife here tonight, too. The water going on the crops, just in, now, this is both our opinions, is kind of, really a half measure. The amount of water that's going to be coming in, in the wintertime, is going to be far greater than what that's going to alleviate. And I understand the fact that the half measure is to protect the aquifer below because the affluent water is not A+, so they can't pump it into the aquifer, or they'll get in big trouble. So, in other words, with all this thrust and money that you're going to spend, the causation of a lot of our problem is affluent water and stormwater. And the whole emphasis on this is that we have one real big problem, is that we have affluent water that contaminates the stormwater as well, where that stormwater can't go to the Truckee River. And it makes things a lot worse. So, in our opinion on this, you need to really, really make a concerted thrust to get to A-plus water, so we don't have the poisoning item. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Michael DiMartini, followed by Tim Fata.
Good evening again, Michael DiMartini, civil engineer, 44 years. Five decades ago, I was 24/7 irrigator on the ranch, and up to this day, we're still doing irrigation, even though I don't have to do it 24/7. So, I know a lot about this stuff. I also know a lot about these valleys. University of Texas did a study of tree ring. University of Texas did a study of tree rings with NOAA and determined that the first three decades of the 1900s were the wettest period in, in 264 years. And it was like raining like this every year, like we've had. The years were as bad as this, so we could, and there are cycles. I had some hydrologists do some harmonic frequency analysis of, of this data. There are cycles, and the cycles, there's ones about 100 years long, so we could be going into this again. And independent of that, this is a good start to the fixing the problem, but it's kind of only taking care of a little bit of the affluent, a little bit. It's not even gonna approach, I was in the trial for, for the, the other day regarding the city of Reno, and I heard a lot, some of the evidence. It was quite clear that the additional runoff we're gonna see from the development that's happened in the last 20 years, you're gonna far exceed this little bit of pumping. So this is a beginning. There are other projects, I proposed some, and I can say that the staff of the city of Reno has been very cooperative, very nice. I talked, spoke with, just had the opportunity to speak with Carrie Lanza right before this meeting, that she's opened her door, that we can come in and we can talk, and we can do the things that the city's talking about. We need to talk about Silver Lake. Swan Lake is just half of it. We got Silver Lake. The big channel's cut off because they can't have the water backing up into the places over there. So we gotta do more, there is a solution, there are several solutions. And by the way, it's, places all over the place are irrigated around here, and water that's used is much like the water in Swan Lake. It's got algae, it's got this and that, it's got cows and deer and whatever, doing whatever into the water, and that runs across the field. And our very wells that we drink out of are in those fields. It's been well-known forever that the ground is a good filter of bacteria, it's a good filter of algae, it's a good filter of even arsenic. And by the way, I had water, the water tested in Swan Lake and Silver Lake for arsenic and other things a couple of years ago myself that I paid for. I submitted my results to the city of Reno, and they submitted to me their results, and the results were very, very similar. The arsenic was, was as low as the drinking water standard, the modern drinking water standard. The actual standard for irrigation is much higher. Thank you very much.
Interesting, very interesting, sir. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, next comments from Tim Fatta.
Again, Tim Fatta. Real quick, I did make a call before this meeting, I called the environmental health, called the vector control, and called air quality. None of them were aware of this meeting. None of them were asked to be at this meeting, and I think it would have been very reasonable that they would be here to be, help to be answering some of the questions. Vector control has no idea what's going on, and their only concern is they hope there's no puddling. But maybe I can take a, take a minute with this overhead and give us all a little explanation here. Real quick, my little deal. This is the, this is the gallons per acre feet, to give you a rough idea, 326,000 gallons per acre feet. In 600 acres that they want to remove, there's 195 million gallons of water. Little bit of water, there's a lot of water in the lake. To remove 600 acre feet, you have to move 535,000 gallons plus per day to move 600 acre feet in a year. Lot of pumping, lots of pumping. Speaking of pipelines, you say the pipeline's going one way. Well, pipes have two ends, depends on where the pump is or which pointed uphill and downhill. Pipe can run the other way. There's 2.2 million gallons of water that are brought into the valley every day with Tumwa. The water's gotta go someplace. I'm sure that the city, you know, discharges some, some A-quality water they're going in, irrigating the golf course. But still, 2.2 million gallons of water a day discharged into the lake, that's 20, that's 2,463 acre feet. Swan Lake is 1,800 acre feet. So if we take the 600 acre feet away, now we're at 1,863 feet. We still got 63 acre feet that's over the roadbed, over what, the area that's there. So, without any of the, the planning, and they're, they're requesting to go and up this outage of the, the discharge to 4.2 million gallons a day. That's 5,000 acre feet, 2.7 times the size of the lake. There's gotta be a lot of pumping, there's gotta be taking a lot of water some other place. We need to improve the sewer treatment plant and fix it up. But in the whole deal, everything we've talked about here today and everything, nobody has taken into any consideration storm water. The storm water runoff from all the warehouses, all the developments, everything, we have no storm drain system in that area. We have retention ponds. And I thank you, but currently there is 1,000 acres in the floodplain that have development plans or proposals in front of the city and the county now. Quit building in the floodplains, please. They're, they're hauling dirt into Lemon Valley right now, stacking it up eight feet deep, gonna push the water to the neighbors. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Madam Mayor, should be noted for the record, Danny Kleus signed in, he did not wish to speak, he's in opposition of the pipeline being installed. With that, Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment. I would now be transitioning back to the body. We would be now, if there are no further questions.
Madam Clerk, it appears we may have one more.
I'm sorry, I didn't know I had to give my name. This is all new.
If you can just come to the podium, ma'am, please state your name for the record. When you're done, I'll have you complete a form.
Thank you. My name is Teresa Kretschmer, and this is new to me, I'm sorry. I just heard about this. I live on American Flat. What's going on? Why is this being rushed? I understand you need a solution, but have you done the analysis to see what the impact is gonna be to the water table in Antelope Valley, bringing that class, what is it, Class C water in? How, what's gonna happen in three years if this is a temporary solution? What happens in three years? What's gonna be better in three years? You're gonna throw all that money away, and you're not gonna be anywhere different than you are right now. Are there going to be, I, I'm worried about having agriculture there. Are they gonna be spraying? Do I need to be concerned for my health? What are they gonna do with the agriculture? They don't even know what they're gonna plant. This is, it's too fast, they don't know what they're doing. That's what I feel like, that's what I'm hearing. The only thing I know about this is what I heard tonight. The other thing that caught my eye is the FAA. Why is it okay for a temporary solution and not a permanent solution? What's the difference? Do the birds know that it's only temporary and they're not gonna come? How is that okay? What's the impact to the Antelope Valley water table? Thank you. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you can just come complete it for me for the record, thank you. Madam Mayor, with that, we have no further comment as it relates to specific agenda items. I would return it to the body. As a reminder, there is action agendized for items 5.3 and 5.4. 5.5 will be reserved for action by the Washoe County Board of Commissioners only.
Okay, I'm going to ask my body, do any of you have any further questions before we move forward? All right. I appreciate, I appreciate your comments at the beginning. I do want to say, Mr. Vince Griffith, thank you for all your hard work, day in and day out. We've had countless conversations over and over and over again, what is the best solution? You really have just, I mean, I, I really am impressed with how much time and energy and how, you know, how much studying you've done to really, you know, come back and be so helpful to the city and the county. I just wanted to say, we really, really appreciate you. If there's any comments, I know I always embarrass people, but if there's any comments you'd like on the record, this might be the time to do it. No, you're fine, okay?
You were late last night, you need to.
Okay, all right. I just wanted you to know, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. We're gonna go for a motion?
Sure.
Let's break it down. Yes. So, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna ask you, we'll break down motions, we'll take our own separate, and then we'll hand it to you.
Okay, so my, my question is for Mr. Liparelli. Mr. Liparelli, will you, will you bring us around here? And what items would, do you need us to, to articulate for you? And Mr. Solero, tell me, tell me exactly what you need from us. I want to stay in our lane.
Mr. Chairman, your agenda positions you to take action on items 5.3 and 5.5.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. I wanted, I just wanted to make sure that, that we stay in our lane, okay? Commissioners, before, before we move through, does, does anyone have any other questions? Any additional questions? Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, I will now be seeking clarification from our city attorney based off of that information. I believe that the Reno City Council should be taking action on items 5.3 and 5.4. Can you please confirm?
That's correct, Madam Clerk.
All right, so Madam Mayor, with that, we would return it to you and your body, looking for a motion on 5.3 first, please.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna send it over to Vice Mayor Duer.
Yeah, sure, thank you. It's an honor to make this motion. I would move to approve the staff recommendation to approve an agreement between Washoe County and the city of Reno for stormwater land application from Swan Lake.
All right, so I have a motion from Vice Mayor Duer. Do I have a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Sending it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burke Bigler.
I'll make the motion, I move to approve the agreement between Washoe County and the city of Reno for the stormwater land application, American Flat Road Site Project located on Washoe County property, APN 079-332-36, and 079-332-37, for the purpose of land application water from Swan Lake.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by Commissioner Lucy, this is on item 5.3. Commissioners, are there's any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries four to, three to one, excuse me, Commissioner, with Commissioner Jung being absent. Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, I'm gonna send it right back to you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. I would move to approve the award of one or more contracts to the best bid in accordance with competitive, competitive bidding laws set forth in Chapter 338 of NRS for flood mitigation and dewatering of Swan Lake by applying water to APN 079-332-37 and 079-332-36, in a total amount not to exceed $3 million.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Mayor, item 5.5 is for the Washoe County Board of Commissioners only to take action on.
All right, I'm gonna send it back to Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if you may, if I may.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Lucy, Vice Chair Lucy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we move to affirm the use of funds received from the sale of water rights in the fiscal year 2017, FY17, with the, within the Capital Improvements Fund, in the approximate amount of 2.5 million for the costs associated with implementation of short-term lake management strategies in fiscal year 2020.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Lucy, second by Commissioner Burke Bigler. Is there any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Jung being absent. Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'm gonna send it back to you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, with that, we are on our closing public comment. These are items reserved for non-specific agenda items. As a reminder of decorum while in the Reno City Council chambers, speakers are allotted three minutes. Please address the council and governing board as a whole. You're expected to be respectful during your comment. No clapping or applause from the audience, please. Madam Mayor, our general public comment today is from Tanya Brown.
All right, thanks so much.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Brown. I'm an advocate for those who've been wrongfully convicted. I've been invited to appear on the World Global Jam.com radio show. The host lives in the UK and the producer lives here in the United States. The topic is issues today. If you're not too busy, I'd like to invite you to watch. It'll be August 17th at 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, it's a Saturday. I will be discussing our issues on wrongful convictions and how the Washoe County District Attorney's Office, law enforcement agencies plays a factor in the wrongful convictions. I will be discussing the perjury complaint against Shelley O'Neil and how she told so many people, "So what if I committed perjury?" Right, Carl Hall? You sat on the perjury complaint until the statute of limitations run out. I will be thank, I will also be thanking the former DA, Dick Gammack. If not for Dick Gammack and his hot-headed temper, he never would have revealed that their office had tested the DNA and hid the test results. And how that revelation led to the court ordering DA Gammack to turn over the entire file in the, in the Nolan Klein case. And as a result of the court order, all the exculpatory evidence was found hiding in the DA's file. I would later file a writ of mandamus, along with all the evidence, that was withheld from the defense. The evidence included the handwritten notes of the prosecuting attorney, Ron Rachau, showing that he never turned over any of the exculpatory evidence or evidence favorable to Mr. Klein's defense that was supported, supported his defense of mistaken identity. The court would deem the handwritten notes as a work product. Not a Brady violation, but a work product. Right, Mr. Liparelli? So in essence, as long as the prosecutor leaves his or her notes in the DA's file, it's not a Brady violation. Is that correct, Mr. Liparelli? I'll be discussing how the current district attorney, Chris Hicks, talks a good talk, but in reality, it's nothing more than a dog and pony show when he presents it to our legislature. Anybody out there watching, feel free to look at my Facebook, it's Tanya Brown, spelled T-O-N-J-A, Brown is in the color, has, has a crime scene banner on it. Next week, I will be posting some of the evidence that was withheld from the trial and being covered up even to, with our current district attorney to this day. And as for Mr. Hall, because I have dealt with him in the past, I personally believe, based on what I have seen, we should be concerned about him being forthright when dealing with lawsuits and evidence and being turned over, because I even question anything this man would do. Thank you, and have a good evening.
All right, thank you. Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment signed in. I would transition it back to you for a motion for adjournment.
All right.
I, I gave you one for this one.
Lori Beach would like to speak in general public comment, not associated with an agenda item.
Sorry.
I'd like to sometime come back for this one to say thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, members of the city council, each and every one of you, whether we agree or not, thank you. Council members, whether we agree or not, I thank you, and especially for allowing, I realize this public comment, or the, actually, number three is our regress to our elected officials, and it's, maybe check the block and we move on, but I want to say thank you. Let, let's move forward, especially last night, we learned so much. I learned so much from the developers. Life sucks for us all right now. So, so let's for once, let's sing a little bit of Kumbaya, you know, I can't sing, but I'll bring the tape recorder. Let, let's have this meeting. The last time we had a joint meeting, we said, "Let this not be the last." How many months until we had to beg for this one? We can thank the mayor, we, we can thank our city council for saying, you know, you have to realize, we come back, every time I come, I says, "Washoe County resident, city of Reno taxpayer, okay? We, your citizens, county commissioners, we are the citizens, we are your citizens, we are the ones most affected by this. Please, let, let's, Madam Mayor, let's get these with the developers. I, I honestly, until, until I got to sit down and break conversation with them, didn't realize how much they're suffering with the carrots that are, that are dangling. And I guess it was Rocket Electric, you know, all those, all those young, young workers And I guess it was Rocket Electric, you know, all those, all those young, young workers that showed up last night. You know, these are, these are people feeding their families. I'm lucky, I'm almost at the sunset. You know, not dead, but not working. You know, I, I plan to travel, my husband's an avid fly fisherman, I've already got my Fly Fishing in America app, we've got our travel trailer, it'll be paid off in two years when we retire. We, we want to keep our home in Reno, but I'm serious, we have already bought property in another state. We have, I, I'm fortunate, I have options. So I don't want to come, this, I'm not, I don't have any more snarky or offhanded comments for you, and telling you where to put your, your sympathy, you know? Please, let's keep working. We talked last night, you know? Let's, let's have these groups, please, let's have these working groups, whatever we have to do legally to have them, let's have them. Because I think there's a lot that can be learned from everybody. I learned a lot from the developers last night, and I am grateful. And I hope to learn more from you, and I hope you learn from us. Thank you.
Ms. Beach, can I give you my business card? Because I would like to hang out with you. Over the last couple of meetings, I appreciated your thoughts and comments, so I want to make sure that you know I see you, and I would like to have coffee with you. If Danny wants to barbecue... If Danny wants to do a barbecue, I'm game for that, too, so make sure that we communicate.
Thank you very much, I appreciate, I know we've talked to...
Honestly, I really appreciate your public comment and your kindness on, on both sides, because I, I know that it's been so hard on you, and, you know, you've come up here every single time and been so respectful when you didn't have to be. So I just, I just want you to know how much we really appreciate you.
The meeting my mom came to, it kills me. My mom taught me, "You get more flies with honey than you do with vinegar, but don't think for one hot second I don't have my vinegar." Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, airport people, I don't know, but thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, with that, I believe we have no further general public comment, and I would be looking for a motion to adjourn, if it so pleases the body.
All right, I need a motion from my body. A motion is second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That's the one motion no one ever fights me on, why?
Commissioners. Motion by Commissioner Burke Bigler, second by, second by Commissioner Lucy. I'm sure that there is, is no discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I knew it. We are adjourned.
And I want to say, thank you to everyone at the Airport Authority. Thank you so much for being here and really appreciate you guys at the table. I really do. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, you are adjourned at this time.